All right, I'll call the meeting back to order at 7:05. Maya, can you reestablish the quorum?
Yes. Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Lathan?
Here.
Vice President Rocha?
Here.
President Hernandez?
Here. Before we continue on, I think in opening up this meeting, I want to take a moment of silence and recognize that one of our staff members, Ms. Crystal Berry, recently passed away. She was the principal at Thomas Gaines Virtual Academy. So if everyone can join me in bowing your heads and taking a moment of silence before we get started with the rest of our business. Thank you. Moving on now to Item B, Reports from Closed Session. We have two items to report out on under Closed Session Agenda Item, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. In Closed Session, the Governing Board took action to issue a notice releasing and reassigning a certificated director pursuant to Education Code Section 44951 effective at the end of the 2024-2025 school year, and directed the superintendent or designee to send out appropriate legal notice. The motion was made by Vice President Rocha and seconded by Trustee Kobo Smith and unanimously voted on yes from the entire board. The second action to report out, also under Agenda Item, Public Employee Discipline Dismissal Release. In Closed Session, the Governing Board took action to issue specific notices of the non-relection pursuant to Education Code Section 44929.21A. The individuals identified by employee EEID include 20874, 21691, 20100, 19543, and 21140. The motion was made by Vice President Rocha and seconded by Trustee Kobo Smith. It was unanimously approved by the entire board voting yes. And that's all the action we have to report from Closed Session. Next, we have the flag salute, and I will go ahead and lead us in that today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we have Item 3D, Approval of the Board Minutes for the Special Board of Education Meeting of January 24, 2025. Or actually, this is the Regular Board of Education Meeting of January 24.
This is special.
That was a... Oh, you're right.
Special.
Special, you're right, yes. Great, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Move approval.
Great, it's been moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no, and the motion passes. Moving on now to Item 4, Superintendent's Report. I'll go ahead and welcome for his first regular board meeting, our interim superintendent, Dr. Matt Wayne.
Thank you, President Hernandez. Oh, thank you.
On, but, oh, there we go.
There you go.
Okay. Thank you, President Hernandez and Board of Education. Good evening, everyone. I'm honored to be here, serving as your interim superintendent, and just want to appreciate the warm welcome I've felt from the Antioch community, and I'm pleased to be able to share some of the highlights that are happening in the district and what I've learned so far. And, let's see here, can I get to the next slide? And so, at this time of year, there's the reclassification ceremonies happening, celebrating our English learner students who are being reclassified as English proficient, and schools are doing this by recognizing the students with their families. And, you know, this is an important milestone for a student, and so important for their future success, because we know our students who are reclassified as English proficient and then are typically bilingual students, speaking more than one language, that just sets them up for success in high school and beyond. And so, this is definitely achievement worth celebrating at our schools. Okay, next slide. And then, this is, we're Black History Month this month. On Friday, there is a celebration, a district-wide event happening Friday evening from 6:00 to 8:00 at Bead's Auditorium. And so, I'm excited to go to that. And earlier this month, we had the King's Conference on February 6, where over 150 middle and high school young men from our secondary schools engaged in a powerful discussion on mental health and wellness. And so, this was a collaboration between the Rotary, the Bridge Builders for New Generation, and our secondary administrators, and just really neat that there's a space to come together to have these conversations of how both we're supporting our African-American youth and men, and what they need to do to be able to be leaders in our community. Next slide. And so, one thing I've been really impressed with as I've joined Antioch Unified are your career pathways, and the fact that every student gets to enroll in a career pathway when they join high school. And so, there's some exciting news from the Antioch High School's construction pathway. They got their heavy equipment machines, so now they can begin their training and actually get certified in the Career Technical Education Program. And so, these really give students skills that they'll be able to use, not just even after graduating, but perhaps even while they're still in school. So, I'm just really appreciative of the career pathways that are in this district. And this district also really tries to create opportunities for inclusion for our students with special needs. And so, we're part of the Unified Sports Program, and most recently had a Unified Bowling Event as part of the Bay Valley Athletic League Bowling League. And so, it's a great opportunity to foster inclusion and collaboration, and it brings together general education and special education students, and you can see how much fun they were having bowling together. And so, while I'm here in an interim role until the end of the school year, I feel like when leading a district, it's so important to understand what's really happening in our schools. I come having been, you know, started my career as a teacher, and see myself as an educator first and foremost, and knows that the work we're doing here in this building is meant to support what's happening in the classroom. So, for me, it's important to just understand what's happening in our schools, what are the schools like in Antioch. And so, I've been doing school visits, and I like doing just unannounced visits, just to see what a day in the life of, you know, of our principal, of our teachers at our school. So, you know, I showed up at one of our schools, I was at Carmen Dragon Elementary, and actually the principal was in a meeting with the students, so the assistant principal showed me around. So, I've been to five of our schools so far, and just again, great seeing the career pathways. I got to, I showed up at Black Diamond Middle School, where they have their weekly celebration of students and the school culture, and students who have gotten their tickets are able to redeem them for a hot chocolate from the principal. So, she was there serving a hot chocolate when I showed up. And I really appreciated my tour of Carmen Dragon Elementary School. There's a picture on the left of their well- There's a picture on the left of their wellness center, and this is truly an innovative space where students can come and take a timeout to really center themselves to make sure they're able to focus on learning. And there's different sections. This is a picture of the yoga section. They also have the kind of hands-on section, where you can use your hands. They have the reading section. And then, I also happen to have visited on Valentine's Day, and there's always, you know, fun Valentine's activities in schools, but what I love seeing was, in this classroom, the teacher had the students create closed-circuit Valentine Days cards. So, the little candle there, that actually lit up, there was a bulb that lit up, and the students learned how to create a closed circuit that could illuminate a bulb through a battery and the circuitry there that was then in the car that you could see. And so, it's just really neat things happening at the schools in Antioch Unified, and I'm looking forward to visiting all of them before my time ends here, and definitely more to report out each board meeting, what's happening at our schools. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Item 5, School Reports, we have High School Representatives' Report.
Good evening, Board of Education and members of the community. My name is Michaela Thomas.
And I'm Isabella Palito.
We are here representing Bidwell High School. Student Activities Information. During the fall, we had 20 students attend the Trades Fair, which was held in Pittsburgh, California. On January 9, 20 students participated in the Internship/Job Fair, which was held at Deer Valley High School. On February 6, three of our young men attended the King's Conference at Deer Valley. On February 13, 16 students participated in the Bite of Reality Event, which took place at Prospects High School. Tomorrow, February 20th, the It's Your Job Day Event will happen on Bidwell's campus. This event is being put on by Junior Achievement. On February 27, a number of our students will be attending the two peer educators' field trip for student, for school leaders.
Student Achievement Information. During Quarter 1, we had 69 students on honor roll and 29 students on distinguished honor roll. During Quarter 2, we had 68 students on honor roll and 34 on distinguished honor roll. Quarter 3 recognitions will be held on March 21. All board members are invited to attend. For this quarter, our average daily attendance is at 90%. Our monthly attendance has increased to 97% due to making phone calls to parents and guardians.
Academies, Link Learning, Special Programs Information. Our seniors are invited to attend a special application workshop to help assist them in completing their fast food applications. On March 10, every student who has completed their fast food applications will be invited to attend the educational planning meeting. A special counselor will work with them to set up their courses for Los Madonnas College. The Fly Law Program has returned to our campus. The 12-week program is designed for youth who want to learn more about the law while building skills to help them navigate their lives. We expect 100 students to graduate from Bidwell High School this coming June 2025. Lastly, Bidwell High School will be recognized by the State of California on April 26 in San Diego, California, as a model continuation school.
Go Blue Dogs! We are devouring the perception.
Thank you so much, and congratulations. I think there's so much great work happening at Bidwell. Yeah. Any other comments from my colleagues?
I did have a question. Quarter 3, what time is the ceremony on the 21st?
We'll have two AM students. We will start their award ceremony at 11 o'clock, and then the PM students, we will start their award ceremony at 2:30.
Okay, thank you so much.
Yeah, Trustee Lathan?
And Dr. Williams, for the recognition for the Model Continuation High School, can you please make sure that the district gets information to share with us, with the time, the location, and all of that?
Yes, definitely.
And are there tickets that are required?
Yes. And I've actually, the district has, is going to pay for four of us to go to San Diego, and so, they'll take care of all of our accommodations and everything. We are taking donations for swag, anybody want to give?
And what's the name of the conference or the event?
I believe it's CCEA. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. If you can send us that information.
CEA.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you again, Principal Williams.
I just want to say, they are part also of the Snug as a Bug, and they were doing a lot of work on that, and you guys are marvelous, because all those items that you're making are going to be used for the veterans, and it's also for the foster children and everybody that we can get in touch, but you are the only school that is working on that, as far as I know. And so, we are pleased to know that you have that interest and that you have the drive to help out for your community. Thank you.
Moving on now to Item 6, Public Comments. We have Item A, Individuals to Address the Board Regarding Items Not on the Agenda From the Public. First, we have Velma Wilson.
Good evening, Antioch Unified School District, Board Trustees, parents, community. This is a little hard for me today. It was two weeks ago today that I was berated, and right after those comments, Crystal was also berated for doing her job. I want everyone to let that sink in, because today, my friend is gone. Thank you, President Antonio Hernandez, for opening the meeting with the silent, but this is hard. We need to make sure we do everything we can to educate our parents. It's not just on me, it's not just on you, it's not just even on these educators. We all have to be in this together, together. Together we stand, divided we will fall. Welcome to Dr. Wayne. I am Velma Wilson. I serve this district from my children's elementary, middle, high school, and I am proud to say, two children on the two opposite ends of the spectrum successfully graduated from these here schools in Antioch Unified. My son, who has autism, and board members sat on that dais and said he wasn't gonna amount to nothing. My son is getting ready to graduate from San Francisco, the Academy of Art University, honor student, 2D animation, film, and design. Don't tell me when you are an involved and engaged parent, what won't happen. My daughter is now in her master's program, and currently came back to this community after graduating from San Diego State with honors. She is working in her field in which she studied, and now continuing on those studies by earning and getting ready to receive her master's degree. It is that tenacity that built, and this is why I do this work. For those that have something negative to say about Velma Wilson, guess what? I'm still standing, and I will carry on Crystal's legacy, I will carry on the job that she has left embedded in me to serve these children and families. Today in Black History, Tuskegee.
I'm going to make sure you get that flyer for the Black History Celebration that you didn't have. You hope...
Thank you. Next, we have, is this Anaya? Anayja, sorry about that.
Hi, I'm Ready. My name is Anayja. I'm a senior at Deer Valley High School. This is my friend, Deandre, also a senior at Deer Valley High School. We're just here to let a lot of the students and the people of the community know that we are with a program named Ready Rep, and we go around and we let our neighbors and our family and our friends know about natural disasters and awareness. We do have a summit this 22nd of February, which is this Saturday at Delta Bay's Community Church, where we will be giving out resources and letting you know how to be prepared for these natural disasters, now that that's out the way. I was asked my opinion on there being patrol cars and armed security guards on campus. That's just another badge with a title, that's not going to help anything on campus. There is violence, and lots of it, and I can understand when it's off-campus, but when it's on-campus and you walk by, it's like, well dang, you got a whole armed belt on you to break up a fight, which lets me wonder what else is going on, because we will be in class, and right after school, we'll know there's been a threat, or there was a gun brought on, or there is an armed person on campus, and usually when that happens, we're supposed to go on lockdown, our parents are supposed to be notified immediately, and that doesn't happen. So, when there's armed patrol, it's like, well dang, that's almost like calling 911, but I don't know why, or I don't know the reason why they're there. So, instead of slapping a bandage on it, let's go in the schools, and let's figure out how we can fix that violent nature within our students, because it's only getting worse. It gets worse with every freshman class that comes in. We see the same faces, it's the exact same ones getting suspended, exact same ones getting in trouble, exact same ones with the weed and everything, it's the exact same people. So, then you have to look, well, what can we do about it now? And how can we extend resources, because there's not a lot on campus, or they don't know about them, or it's the same three questions, and then you don't see them for another three months, and it's like, well dang, where did I go, when I needed you most? So, that's my opinion. Have a good night.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate that we typically can't respond to specific things until we have them like agendized, but know that we do hear your concerns and are working to bring the concerns that people bring forward to future board meetings, but we'd love to respond more thoughtfully, but we cannot. Next, we have Devin Williams.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board, President, and Trustees, and community, and staff, hello. My name's Devin Williams, work for Liftup Contra Costa, and as my wonderful two employees here, Anayja and Deandre came up and let y'all know about our summit this Saturday that will be at 10:00 a.m. We are excited to have you all to come out to our event, to keep the community informed. We know that California is not short of anything of natural disasters, wildfires, floods, hurricanes, tornadoes, we don't know what we're going to get next, you know? So, I was just letting you guys all know tonight that we are going to have a program that kind of delves into like how to be prepared, how to keep you and your family safe. I don't want to take up too much more time, but also wanted to let you know what we've been hearing in the community, and one of the, as we've been doing our canvassing of our neighborhoods, one of the things that came up that wasn't related to natural disasters was families and their children in the school district, and one of the things, this just happened a couple of days ago, where a community member just started talking about the school. I was like, well, I'm going to the board meeting tomorrow, is there anything that you'd like me to articulate for you? And she said that communication, when there's an emergency at the schools, or when the schools are being locked down, parents are not notified, according to her, in a timely manner, or in the event of something happening. And so, I guess there was an incident at Antioch Middle, she was saying, one of her eighth graders goes there, and there was an incident that highly concerned her, and she was not notified until very late in the afternoon, or the next day or something, she said. I don't want to misspeak for her, but she couldn't make it tonight, but that is something that she wanted me to bring to y'all tonight, is better communication with the families in the school district. Another thing is, the other day, I did see a patrol car, SR Global, with AUSD underneath. It said, "Antioch Unified School District." And I come up here before and talked to y'all about how I don't think SR Global is a suitable resource for campus security. I've had issues with them where I was harassed, I felt threatened, I didn't do anything except for my job, which was to organize tenants against their corporate landlord, and I was invited by these tenants to do such. Invited, literally, I was not trespassing, I was apprehended and by the security guard who recorded me. Tenants were yelling, "Leave him alone, you know he's just doing his job." So, I'm just telling you about the assertiveness and the aggressiveness that these individuals can have. That's not to say they're all like that, but, you know, they're hired for a reason. So, I'm gonna leave it there. Thank you all, have a wonderful evening. I gotta bounce, so, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again. I do want to continue to encourage people to, you know, submit public comments. Unfortunately, we can't dive into those things immediately when they come to us, but I do think it is appropriate for me to say that I think the Board has heard these things, is very concerned about these things, and, yeah, we know we're working through the processes for getting things on the agenda and having the discussion that we hear from everyone. Moving on to B, Individuals to Address the Board Regarding Items Not on the Agenda From District Employees. First, we have Kendra Borja.
We're here as the AEA bargaining team. Just want to thank everyone for your support when we bargained this year. We're very happy with the settlement that we reached, and our members finished our ratification process today and voted about 99% with approval. So, next month, when it comes to you, I hope you all approve our tentative agreements, and we will see you very soon, so we can sunshine and get started right away for next year, because we have a lot to get to. Thank you.
Next, we have Shara Pahaau. Is that pronounced right?
It took me a while to learn it also. It took me a while. Hi. Hello. Okay. Hi. My name is Shara Pahaau. I've proudly worked for Antioch School District for going on 10 years, that's two years of subbing and eight years permanent, as a CKPA. I'm here tonight alongside my colleagues from Nutrition Services, for all those available and those that are not, because they're possibly at working a second job. I'm calling on the district to do the right thing, raise the wages of nutritional service assistants, and ensure that workers who feed our students can also afford to feed our own families. Right now, we're among the lowest-paid employees in the district, our starting wages are lower than what fast-food chains are currently paying. Many of us struggle multiple jobs, I too have worked two jobs just up to this year, to be able to provide all the basic essentials. No one working in our schools, serving meals to thousands of students every day, should have to struggle to pay rent or put food on our own table. Back in October, we brought forward a proposal to increase wages for Nutritional Service Assistance Assistant One's positions. The Nutrition Department supported it. The union worked with us to craft an agreement and brought it to the district, yet we still have yet to hear anything from the district. Now, the district's finally considering raising our wages, so that's why we're here, to urge the district to approve and get this moving, this long overdue topic moved along to the increase that we're asking. We're not asking for anything extravagant, just fair compensation for the critical work we do. We call on you to raise the wage floor in our district and show that you value the people who are nourishing our students, and some of those students are your own children every single day. Thank you for your time.
If someone's more comfortable speaking in Spanish, are they able to?
Yeah, absolutely able to, yeah. Next, we have Zamira Lorena Herrera Rodriguez. Uh, next we have Zamira Lorena Herrera Rodriguez.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Zamira. I have worked in Antioch Unified School District for two years as an NSA One. I'm here to support my fellow nutrition service assistant. Because we need to increase the wages of our NSA Ones. Uh, I'm, I'm, as a NSA One worker, we do a lot of work, same as, uh, CKPA, NSA Two, and our pay is very low. I think we deserve a better pay for all the hard work that we do. We have, um, I, can I speak in Spanish?
Yeah.
Okay. El trabajo que hacemos una NSA Uno. Nosotros somos cajeras. Este, preparamos comida. En, en el central kitchen, sabemos cómo preparar todas las máquinas. Preparar la comida y todo lo que hacen las personas a más altas de la posición que nosotros, excepto que nosotros no ordenamos comida. El supper es una responsabilidad grande porque we have to turn on the ovens, turn it off, check temperatures, uh, set up the lines and everything. Y igual que una persona, un lead, excepto por no ordenar comida. Y pues pienso que nos merecemos una paga un poco más alta porque con el sueldo que nos dan, no podemos sobrevivir. Hasta este punto, en lo personal, yo estoy pensando, no sé si es, debo seguir ahí o buscar otro trabajo porque pues es muy, muy bajo. Una persona no puede sobrevivir con ese sueldo. Espero que escuchen todo lo que todos tenemos que decir y tomen encuentran nuestras opiniones para ver si se puede hacer algo por nosotros. Gracias.
Thank you so much, everybody.
Uh, next we have, um, and I may be reading this wrong. Is this Darla Ferrara?
Hello, Board. My name is Darla Ferrara. I worked for the district for 19 years as an NSA One. I started as a student monitor and finally went to Central Kitchen. And I also work at Deer Valley for, uh, serving lunch. My thing is, if an NSA One can step in and do an NSA Two job or a CKPA job or even a lead as a sub, they definitely deserve more money. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next, we have Juwari Satyadi.
Good evening, Board. My name is Juwari Satyadi. I have worked for Antioch Unified School District for the past eight years. Started with position as NSA One. But right now, I'm the NSA Two at the Central Kitchen and NSA One at the DV Cafeteria. I'm here to support my fellow nutritional service assistant here. We need to increase the wages for our NSA One. As an NSA One at Cent, as an NSA One at Central Kitchen, we work very hard to prep the food, package them, arrange them in the basket. It is really a lot of heavy lifting. At the cafeteria, we work my line. I work my line alone and serve as a cashier too. When lunch, first lunch almost ends, some of us have to assemble burger. We make a fresh burger for the second lunch. We work very hard but happy to serve the kids, especially if the kids could eat healthy food. We hope our MOU will be taken into consideration by the Board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Cherry Robinson. Cherry, sorry, apologize.
Hello. Hello, Ms. Rocha. How are you? How's everybody? Um, I'm an NSA One and a cashier in NSA, NSA Two. So I work at Central Kitchen. I start at 5:00 in the morning. I work until 8:30. I leave there and go to Belshaw. So I just think that I should, all of us should have an increase in pay. The student monitors are making more than we do and we serve the kids food. So, and most of our student monitors wash tables and sit on their butts. So, and yell at the kids all day. So I'm gonna tell you how it is. So, but I would appreciate you guys to take into consideration and look it over and get back to us. So thank you for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Guadalupe Rocha.
I speak Spanish.
Yes.
Buenas noches a todos. Este, yo, mi nombre es Guadalupe Rocha. Uh, tengo siete años trabajando para el distrito. Por la mañana trabajo en Deer, en Central Kitchen, tres horas y media y en, y de ahí pues Deer Valley, que también soy Nutrition Service Assistant One. Las actividades que realizamos en la cocina central, he podido comparar que es, eh, porque trabajo en los dos lados, que son un poco más pesadas en la cocina central que en, que en high school. Todas realizamos las mismas actividades. Somos Nutrition Service Assistant One, pero eh, tenemos, yo, en lo personal quisiera que, este, si se aprobar este aumento porque creemos que sí nos lo merecemos por el duro trabajo que realizamos todas ahí en, en la cocina central. Muchas gracias y que pasen buenas noches a todos.
Gracias, buenas noches. Y también quiero decir que si, en el futuro, si quieren ayuda en traducir, eh, para traducir lo que quieren decir, nomás llamen al distrito antes de la junta y podemos ver si podemos tener alguien aquí para traducir. Yeah, and for everyone, yeah, if you ever need any kind of translation help, please call the district in advance and we may be able to, uh, provide that. Even though many of us, I think, speak and understand Spanish here or some other additional languages. Um, that's always something that we can work with. Uh, next, we have Jean Kearns.
Hello, to all of you, and thank you for having us tonight. Um, I have worked with the district for the past 27 years as a lead with Crystal at Lone Tree as Mentor Fact. And I also do a, the supper program as an NSA One. And I feel that all of us need to have a raise because we are below a student monitor. And we are doing the work as a lead, actually. So, um, if you could all just consider that, we would really appreciate it. And thank you for hearing us tonight. I appreciate all of you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shari Faria.
Good evening, Board. My name is Shari Faria and I've worked for the Antioch School District for the past 15 years as an NSA One and a lead. The NSA Ones are integral parts of the kitchen. We need them for everything, as you can hear. Uh, we would really appreciate it if you would consider waging, consider raising their wages tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And then lastly, we have Madonna Mosiclat.
Hello, good evening, Board. My name is Madonna Mosiclat. I've worked with Antioch District for eight years as NSA One and cashier. So I'm here to support my fellow nutrition service assistant. So it's highly appreciated if you will raise our wages and, uh, thank you so much and good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all the public comments? Uh, moving on to item seven, District Reports. Uh, we have item A, Midyear Update for the 2024-2025 Local Control Accountability Plan. And I will turn it over to Ms. Abara. Sure. Good evening again, everyone. And just to introduce Ms. Abara, this is an important update. Every year, the district approves a local control accountability plan. And Ms. Abara will, uh, provide some background on that. So this is just a discussion item, uh, but it is an opportunity for the Board to, um, hear progress to date and provide feedback as we develop, um, our, uh, the, uh, make revisions to the LCAP for the '25-'26 school year. Because we're in the first year of our three-year plan that you just approved. And Ms. Abara from Educational Services is going to present.
And I have to say that Dr. Wayne, in the short time that he's known me, knows that I talk a lot and go a little long. So he's got me on a timer. We'll see how I do. Yeah, don't, don't give away my minutes while you're trying to get my slides up. All right, so we are required, I'm gonna go through everything. I'll start with first our agenda for, for this section of our meeting tonight. We will start with a brief LCAP overview because I know we have some members, you know, some new members of the Board, but also new members in our community that might be listening in and aren't familiar with what the LCAP is, the Local Control Accountability Plans. We'll spend time there. We will also talk about our mid-year outcome data. We'll spend time focusing on areas of improvement and/or for improvement. And then we will end with Director Ed Dacus sharing our mid-year expenditure report. And that's just a reminder, this is a mid-year. And so some of this data is present in, from our California dashboard, which is what we're going to be focusing on this evening. Um, but there are also some local metrics, uh, some that we can present this evening, but then others that will be presented when we bring the full LCAP back at the end of the school year. So just for reference, um, our Local Control Accountability Plan is part of the, um, the LCFF. So the Local Control Funding Formula. It's a required document that must be approved in our state. It is a three-year document. We are in year one. So this is year one of that three-year plan. For the purposes of tonight's presentation, we are required, um, the, every school district in the state is required to provide this, uh, mid-year report by, um, at a board meeting before February 28th. And so we will be sharing some of the things and progress that we've made and then some of the mid-year expenditures. So I'd like to start with our data from the, um, California Schools Dashboard. Starting with, um, there's a lot of ways to look at data that our students, that we have on our students. And one way that, the, the primary way that the California Dashboard does that is looking at comparative data. So they take what is the status, um, starting from 2024, at the end of last, the spring of 2024, and they look, go back and do a comparison of where our, how our students performed in the year prior, so in 2023. And so with that, there are all the different areas of, um, the performance levels. And you can see highest being in the blue, working down to the lowest in the red. So here is our overall, um, what are, when you log into the California Dashboard, this is what you'll see when you pop open, um, for Antioch Unified. Overall, we see some progress or minimal progress, with the exception of math, where we are persistently low. Now I'm going to spend a little bit of time digging into our student groups. So as you can see here, they're listed, the student groups are listed along the, um, the left. And then across the top, you are looking at the different indicators that are reported on the California Dashboard. And so what you see here, um, when we, when our team, the Ed Services team dug into really the specific data, especially as we were loading it into the document that we attached to this agenda item, we noticed in many cases, the data is stagnant. And so that is something that we're looking at across the board, is we may have made an incremental growth of a point or two or dipped a point or two, but, but for the most part, we're very, very stagnant. As a team, we also look at our student groups. So looking at our student groups, what are those student groups that are persistently low? So for instance, as you're looking up there and you see our American Indian foster and homeless youth, there, we have four areas where they are in the red. And you can look up and see in which areas those are. Followed by our English learners, socioeconomic students, uh, disadvantaged students with disabilities and our African-American students, where they have three areas of red. The other thing that we look at is, in the, in the, in the columns, we see that we are struggling with English Language Arts across the board, Math across the board. And, um, also in our suspension data is also not where we would like to see it, at least at not the end of, of last school year. One of the interesting facts that I do want to share, because we learned it recently when a team of us went to the Contra Costa Office of Education. So part of the requirements in the testing, so when you're looking at ELA in math, we are required to have a 95% participation rate, which means at least 95% of our students must take this exam. Whereas we met it as a group, when we looked at the different student groups, we learned that there were student groups, several of them, which we did not test 95% of them. So what ends up happening is the difference, and so for, I'll take foster youth as an example because that's one of the examples we worked with, with the county. We had eight foster, we were eight foster students short of reaching that 95% threshold. So what happens is, is those eight students get less than the lowest score possible. So that then increases the issue, you know, it, it compounds the score. And so we've already been talking as a team of how can we, as soon as we see a foster student come to school, because that's all, they, we, they have some chronic absenteeism. So if they don't show up in the window of testing, what are the ways that we can get them tested? Test them on the day outside of the window. Who cares? See what we can do, working, you know, going into the homes and proctoring it differently. So we're looking at creative ways to make sure that we're at least testing, at the very least, make sure that we are getting that 95% participation for each, um, student group. So that's one of the things that I just wanted to point out, so a new learning for us. We acknowledge that our data, um, is unacceptable. We also, I, I, I would be remiss to say if, you know, our staff, our teachers, our support staff, our administrators, we're all working hard. But we need to identify some strategies that will disrupt this stagnation in these schools that we are experiencing. And so part of what I'm going to be sharing this, this evening is it, is some top three strategies that we're focused on. And those are the ones that we want to be held accountable for. So I'm going to start with, um, the first two strategies that I'm going to talk about are systems. They address our systems issues. Professional learning communities are, um, first, we're establishing those. Um, what a professional community is, it's essentially a cycle of inquiry. It's really heavily focused on academics. It is making sure that we are looking at mastery and rigor. So connecting back to what we learned last year from the National Center of Urban School Transformation, rigor was an issue, mastery was an issue. And so we feel that by creating and working through the professional learning communities, that we will be able, um, to, to kind of narrow in on those things and make sure that our in on those things and make sure that our students, um, are getting what they need to be successful. So looking quickly at the big ideas of what a professional learning community are, it is learning, um, you know, kind of, learning is our fundamental purpose. That is why we exist as an organization. Second is teaching, for the most part, and you'll hear that with a lot of people that talk about it, isn't, it can be isolating work. Teacher goes into their classroom, they work with their kids, and that is, as wonderful as they are, we're not going to move a school or move students, um, by, by doing this work alone. Um, and so working collaboratively is a very important and key piece of this. And then at the bottom, and it's, it's steeped in results. It's not what we think about how kids are performing, or we think of what's successful and isn't. We have to have data that backs that up. The four critical questions, the foundational questions of our PLC are starting is with, very simply, what is it we expect our students to learn? And that's attached to standards, and we're talking levels of mastery. Um, and so from there, then we say, well, how do we know if they've learned it? Um, what assessments do we do? Can it be, it can be as simple as an exit ticket. What does that look like? I just taught this lesson, four questions out the door, did they get it or not? Um, and then what do we do when they don't get it? How do we adjust that instruction or, um, our structures for support? And then what do we do when we do get, when the students do get it? And I remember as a principal, when we were doing professional learning communities, that was the first time we asked that question. Well, shoot, we already had 10 kids in the class that knew it. So what are we doing with them? Because they're wasting, we're wasting their time if we're not focused, um, on them as well. So going a little bit deeper, one of the things that I will share that has happened between, um, last spring and now, every single one of our principals in the school district has attended, um, professional learning series. Uh, it's a seminar, either in professional learning community, communities or RTI. And so they have caught fire and are starting to implement practices. We, um, invited, and we were so thankful that our members of our AEA, um, team came and joined us so that we could hear them and work with them as thought partners, um, to advance this work and get their perspective on what they feel that their members need to be, for this to be successful. I'm just going to keep going. Oh, I will say something really quickly. One of the areas where we are right now is that our principals and, and vice principals are working on identifying their guiding coalition. So that's the group of staff that they have on campus that are going to take this work and, and really build it into their school culture. Really quickly, there's a lot on here, but I just wanted to show you some examples of, on the left side, you see a phased, a phased-in approach to this. As I mentioned, our schools right now, a district as well, is, is deeply working on our guiding coalition, um, and making sure we have folks on board that are wanting to dig into this work and make it meaningful and, and be able to implement it. Um, on the right side, you are looking at, I know it's all super small print, but it's how we are connecting our mission, vision, values, and our goals as a district. And so wanting as a value to make sure that we're developing collaborative systems, um, to work through our needs, um, and as well as aligning in our goals, our professional development, including that end-cust result, um, into our decisions. How am I doing on time? I gotta step it up. I know, I feel it. Um, so multi, uh, multi-tiered systems of support, um, it's been referred to as RTI, Response to Intervention, for a very, a large number of years. It's been MTSS for, for a while. They do have some similarities, but again, it's a system. It's a system that identifies and prioritizes and structured, um, instruction, instruction with layered support. So one being kind of thinking of a tier, because it is a tiered support system, but level one being, um, universal best instruction. So the instruction that all students should have. Two, looking more deeply at supplemental supports in and beyond the classroom. So what is happening in our classrooms and ways we are differentiating with our students, and then what support structures or things can we put into place, um, to get kids where they need to be, um, based on what the skills they need to, um, develop. And then third, being the intensified support systems for individual students in particular. I'll also mention here, and I'll talk about it later, but our, our care team, uh, it's Children Accessing Resources and Education, and it's a team made up on every one of our campuses that involves a number of different people from administrators, counselors, outsized resources, resources, teachers, anyone that the school, it could be a restorative facilitator, um, that is on the campus, that when, when teachers have exhausted the ability to serve the students in the, in the classroom, we can now look at, at it as a, as a school. How can we, what other supports available within the school? And then we even have a district care team, so that when a school feels like they have kind of exhausted all of their options and resources, that we can, they can come to us and we can explore those further. Some examples of, um, our programs to date so far, we do have, um, we do have things going on within, um, multi-tiered system of support that address both the academics and the behaviors through, um, restorative practices and alternatives to suspension. So up there, you'll see some of the things that have been going on. Um, elementary, I know that they have been working very, very hard at developing the strategies with our teachers to show them that level-two supports also can happen in the classroom through differentiated instruction, having small groups, and so forth. Our secondary has done an amazing job with looking at all the ways that we can be, um, supportive through, um, restorative practices, community building, and the, um, alternatives to suspension. So we're giving students an opportunity to learn about themselves, learn how to self-regulate, learn how to be able to, um, share their experiences and, and voice in the things that they need. And then when it comes to suspension, taking a different approach so that students have an opportunity to learn about behaviors and those, the impact those behaviors have, because we know sending kids home does not improve student behavior. Um, and so working through those, those pieces. Some of our next steps is to continue to work on dedicated times, looking at, I know a number of our elementary schools in particular are looking at ways to provide, uh, differentiated support just for a period of time in the day. Um, so they're getting just the right, um, skills building that they require. I know some of our secondary sites are looking, it's, it's a little more challenging in secondary because of their master schedules, but finding ways to embed intervention support in a secondary environment. YouFly, I am moving along. I know I'm still going to run out of time, but I'm going to go fast. I know, um, I don't think all of you have had an opportunity to hear from one of our coordinators in Ed Services, Deb, Deborah Malin, but she is deeply invested in YouFly, um, and it's an early literacy program that really takes, um, it's focused on our kindergarten through second graders, building those foundational skills for reading, um, but also our, um, third through fifth grade will use it in intervention situation. Progress to date, um, I, my hats are off to our teachers, especially our K-2 teachers that really have dove in. We're hearing good things. We are hearing some challenges around the pacing. Um, this is our first year of implementation, so we always know there's a learning curve, and it takes time to get used to it. But by and large, they are doing it, doing it well, um, and we will continue to refine that pace. And that's kind of what's on the next slide, sharing that, you know, we want to, we're, we're working on getting a survey out to teachers to hear from them, what kind of been, what have been some of the hurdles, especially around pacing, so that we can kind of, um, update and make some adjustments and refine our practices there. And then we'll be looking more so at, um, monitoring the progress of students on a weekly basis. We want to get them, the first year under their belt before we kind of ratchet it up, but. So with that, I'm going to pass it over. Sorry, Ed, you got 30 seconds, buddy.
Yes, ma'am. So just, uh, wanted to bring us back, um, at a, our February 5th special, uh, board meeting, uh, Ms. Robbins did provide a detailed budget update. So, um, as part of this mid-year update, um, for our LCAP, um, we do want to share, uh, just that overview for parents again, as well as the current LCAP budget status. This was, uh, the, the page from our budget overview for parents, um, at the adoption of the 24, 25 LCAP. The total projected revenue at that time for ANEAC Unified, uh, was, uh, $268.6 million. Uh, 210 million of that was LCFF funds. And then you'll also see the breakdown of other, of other funds, uh, $35.4 million for, um, other state funds. That includes things like our educator effectiveness, um, funds, our expanded learning funds, um, learning recovery, emergency block grants, things like that. Um, we had $10.8 million in, uh, local funds. This would include, um, uh, specific grants that we might have, or the, the districts were awarded, as well as any donations. Um, 12 point, uh, $12 million in federal funds. These are our title programs, um, as well as, uh, the 21st Century, uh, Community Learning Center funds that we get for our expanded learning programs, the ACES and the Assets Grants. Of this, oops, not yet. I know. It's going to take me longer than 30 seconds. I'm sorry. So the second pie graph here is just pulling out that LCFF review, and just to want to reiterate that we had 162 million in, um, .5 in our LCFF funds, and then 47.7 of that, um, at the time of adoption, was our S and C allocation, and that makes up our LCAP budget. Now we can go. So at this mid-year, um, I just wanted to bring, um, we did have a slight revision to our, our budget. Um, it's at 48 million, 48.2 million. This increase is a result of some carryover money, as well as some adjustments that we received because our, um, high, um, high-needs student counts increased this year. So that accounted for that. Um, our current expenditures are at 44, a little over 44 million. This includes any encumbrances. And encumbrances would be things like positions that we've pulled the, we've pulled funds aside, so we're making sure that those are allocated. So at this time, um, we are operating within our LCAP budget, and we'll continue, uh, with our planned expenditures. And, um, those expenditures are going to address, uh, the identified goals that we have.
Thank you, and thank you, uh, Ms. Abara. And, you know, I, I asked for the 20 minutes time limit because I feel like the real value of this update is the opportunity for the discussion that we're about to have. So, um, I appreciate Ms. Abara recognizing, as an educator, I look at that data and agree, it's, it's not acceptable for, for our students to be performing at that level. Unfortunately, it's typical in many districts, but I know there's a commitment here to change that. And so what Ms. Abara did was highlight three of the major strategies identified in the LCAP that we think will make a difference. You have attached the whole LCAP in the presentation that has appendix, so you may discuss any component of, of the LCAP, but we just wanted to highlight what we think are the high-leverage activities that will start to change those outcomes for our students.
Yeah, and I just want to, I think, emphasize that and really appreciate you calling out. Um, yeah, exactly. We're lacking, acknowledging that our data is unacceptable. I think we've had, uh, for too long in this district, the conversation is, are we doing good or not, when it makes, I think, many of us feel crazy that we're having that discussion at all, when really everyone should be looking at that and knowing that, that is unacceptable. But we can also acknowledge two thoughts at the same time, um, that we can both have data that's unacceptable, and we can have some of the hardest-working staff and teachers here, because there's so many different factors that come into the outcomes for our students. So now we can focus on the real great discussion of how do we fix this? Because we're all trying to do that. That's what our staff comes to work every day to try to do, and that's what we should be talking about here, is how do we support and do that? So it's great that we're now highlighting here three ways we think that we're going to make, uh, this kind of change, and now we can kind of discuss that up here, uh, as a board. Um, so yeah, I'd welcome any of, uh, my colleagues, if you have questions or a place you kind of want to start discussion. Yeah, Trustee Kobo Smith.
You know, I sent you some questions beforehand, but this one came up just as we were, as you were reviewing. Um, what are the criteria for who is in Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three? And do we have a percent, percentage of what students are in each group?
So Tier One is everyone. So that is, is like your first instruction. It's, it's universal. All students get it. And so from there, say, after you've taught a lesson or a unit, um, and you've, you've, you've gotten some assessments, and you're realizing that there are groups of students that are lacking some skills, um, that allow them to, to reach the mastery. And so something that I know our elementary schools do very brilliantly is they can differentiate instruction. So they can say, give it a math lesson. We've taught it. This group of students don't, don't have this particular concept, which is keeping, preventing them from getting to mastery. This group needs something else. This group needs something else. So they can put them into different groups, and then they differentiate, and they provide direct support to groups of students. Like, they'll give the whole lesson, but then they'll pull different groups within the classroom. We also, on the reading side at our elementars, we have reading teachers, um, that also support, and they can push in, they can pull out groups of students. I don't have an exact percentage because it ebbs and flows, because it's really fluid in that with each lesson, which each, with each standard, different students might know some standards, but not other ones. And so that's really the intent is for the system to be so finely tuned that it's not, this kid doesn't know all these things. It's no, what schools, uh, standard by standard, what is it they're struggling with? So that the, that the support is specific to that, and it's not just generalized. Because we know, I mean, that's, I always thought of, students can be, especially when you're behind, they can be Swiss cheese. So they have different holes and different areas, and treating them all the same, giving them all the same support isn't helpful. Yeah.
I'll let somebody else go.
Trustee Brown, then maybe we'll go, like.
So my question would be, what is your measurable? Like, what are you measuring this? I know that you wrote it down, and it's all clear, but what are your measurements? Like, is it another district? Or, like, how do you know how would they measure out to be effective?
We're looking for, we're looking at the data. So it's not, there are times that we look at other districts, and it's really more to find exemplary practices and inquire more. Like, what are you doing that you're getting this outcome? Like Pittsburgh Unified, as an example, can have, have similar demographics and, you know, same kind of challenges. And so when they're excelling in something, we reach out. What are you doing in this area? And in fact, a lot of our mental health supports that we brought into the district, they were kind of, they were the pioneers in that. And so we, to some degree, at least initially, modeled some of the things we try to bring in based off of them. So we do look outside the district, but really, I mean, the internal measures are what they are. These are the standards our students need to learn. We've identified ones that we feel are the priorities. Um, there's still a large list of them, but what our teachers have decided, our kid, this second grader cannot go to third grade without knowing these things. And the standard is, is what we're, we're measuring mastery on. What is the standard asking for?
So not just academically wise, meaning the, the approach that we're going to take with this. How, what is the, like, what are you comparing that to? Like, this district over there mastered, their approach was a little bit different. So of course, we want those, those colors to be changed.
Yes.
But what measurement do we have in regards to the approach? Is, we want it to work, right?
Right.
But is there anything that you?
It really depends on each action.
Okay.
So if we're looking at suspension, for instance, we have suspension data.
Okay.
Um, and we have it by school, we have it, you know, and so I even have, you know, data with me because our, um, Alternatives to Suspension is a newer, we piloted last year, and now we're doing a more expansive rollout. We are looking at data, we're down 20% from last year. Um, and so that has to be a contributing factor, as well as a restorative work. It's like, if, because at the end of the day, you can suspend a kid, send them home, they're going to come back and haven't resolved anything. They haven't learned anything, they- They haven't learned anything, they haven't resolved anything. And so we're trying to shift that, so our students can come together, in some cases their families join them, and it's like, let's figure out what the issue was. So we can kind of move on, because, you know. And then giving them opportunities to learn. Sorry, Matt.
No, and I think, Trustee Brown, if this is what you're saying, this is helpful. I learned from the Council of Great City Schools a framework, there are different types of data, and one helpful way to think about it might be input data, output data, and outcome data. So the outcome data is the student data. It's always what's the result from the students? And so that's, you know, the state standards, so we have those dashboards, very easy to compare. The output data is what's changing based on, in terms of either student or adult behaviors that might lead to an improved student outcome. So for example, for the UFLY, you are tracking implementation of the UFLY, right? So that will let us know, because, you know, so let's say we find that it was done, you know, 100% of classrooms were using it, but it wasn't done, but we didn't see growth in reading, then we start to know, well, was it the professional development support? Is it the program, or what? But if you're not trying, if nobody's using it, then we can't say, well, UFLY wasn't a problem. So you need to track some of that outcome, output data, which is, I think, what you're speaking to. So as we think about the final report, that might be a helpful framework to include some of that data.
And one of the attachments to the doc, to this item, is the actual document, the mid-year report, and they structured it differently this year, which was actually really helpful. So aside from the metrics that sit on top, when you look at each action below, the first column that will be there is about, is around implementation. Because that's one of the first things, we can't really measure a program if it's not being fully implemented. And then there is the specific data to that action, and then we use the third column to talk about changes that we think need to happen, based on what we're seeing in the implementation and data. Yeah.
Trustee Lathan?
Thank you for the presentation. And just a question, once the data came out, and again, this is a snapshot in time.
Yes.
But were, was anyone surprised? Like, were principals surprised, teachers, district office people, were they surprised by that outcome data?
I think there are surprises. There's always surprises in our data. I know that I can speak, I know our sites are kind of working through that right now. One of the things that we have chosen to do is bring the county in, so they can go really in-depth with our administrators as well, because they also have some additional resources beyond the dashboard. But I think any, all of us have sat in front of it and go, wow. I didn't, I mean, and I just shared the one around the participation rate, how much that impacted. It's unfair that our students are being kind of categorized in this way when they weren't all tested. And so that's, that was a surprise. I think I can speak for myself, and probably members of my team, I was definitely disheartened when you're working so hard, and you feel like you're doing some great stuff, and it doesn't show up in the way that you think it will. And then I will also say, even with the initiatives that we have going right now with professional learning communities, those are long-term efforts and investments, and they're going to take time for that to show up in the data. So one of the things that we're doing is we're looking at all of our actions and deciding, this is another activity we just recently went through, is it's that effort impact. And how much, there's some things that we do that create a lot of effort, and will get a lot of impact, but they take time. There are also things that will have a good impact, but don't require a lot of effort. So what are we doing? In the meantime, while we're waiting three years for we to start to see results, and to start to see our babies that have had UFLY for a few years start to improve literacy over throughout the grades, what are the things we can do right now to change, to make a difference?
The reason why I asked you that question is because one of the kind of hallmarks of high-performing districts is that they know, they can predict pretty accurately how students will perform, because they've been monitoring along the way. So for example, if you have fifth-grade teachers who are surprised that their students did not meet proficiency in, you know, math or English, then that tells me, and it should tell the principal and the district leaders, that there was a lack of monitoring along the way. It shouldn't be a surprise. It should be like, oh, we know Johnny is going to be proficient, because every three weeks when we do our, you know, whole-school assessments, the short assessments, we understand that. We know where he is, and we've implemented different strategies to support. So that's one thing that I just wanted to say.
I know we do our I-ready exams, you know, three times a year, but again, that's not enough.
No, it's not.
It does provide some indication, but it doesn't, and I think that's why we want to have the professional learning community. So how are we looking at student data routinely, collectively, not just class by class, but
So formative assessment. People are literally doing exit tickets daily, right? So part of the NCUST report and their research shows that when we really focus on mastery, student achievement changes dramatically. And the mastery part is the checking for understanding, which is the monitoring. So, and I heard you say for the PLCs, and I know some of the questions, that's what they're asking, they're getting to mastery, right?
Yes.
And so I will say, what I am glad about is when I meet with principals, hands down, they're like, this year and last year was the first time they really focused on learning. It wasn't about just managing their school, but it was about instructional leadership, and they're learning how to be instructional leaders. So that was good feedback from them. And I can say, I see clearly in the lower grades, the blending, decoding, the UFLY, the Haggerty, like, all of that, I see it, and I know that in a couple of years, we'll start to see the long-term effects of that. And like you talked about in terms of the quick impact, like, just continuing to think about things in terms of, so what do we do now? And I think it's the mastery, checking for understanding, and getting a system in place so teachers know every day when kids leave their classroom, they know exactly who knows what and why, so that they can start addressing it before kids start to really internalize misconceptions. They need to address them quickly. So I just wanted, and I know you and I have had these conversations, and I know that you all are working, and we don't want people to work so hard, work in a way that they're not effective. So what is the effective way to do things?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments, face, Ben Roach?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I know that we talked about how much we're making an effort on the elementary, in the beginning stages, which is where the structure is. But what about the transition when they go into junior high? I said this before, we lose our reading teacher, which is actually continuation of their ability to learn, and we change that position, and I'm not sure what happens to them.
Well, one of the benefits this year is all of our secondary principals attended the response to intervention, the multi-tiered systems of support, and they're already exploring ways to adjust their master schedule, to allow for opportunities for kind of that tier two, that more targeted support for students. And I will, you know, she couldn't be here tonight, but I will, recently, our team was at Antioch Middle School, and they are one of our kind of pioneers. They've already taken off in this direction, and they are doing some incredible work in really moving the staff to understand what a professional learning community is, and start to identify ways for students to get that support that they need, given that they don't have the same, it doesn't, it looks very different than what it does in
Elementary.
In elementary, yeah.
And of course, that age group isn't very, you know, they kind of resist as well. They don't want to be identified. But at the same time, it also causes them to have some problems with their own peers.
Well, Mike, yeah, Mike Mattos is one of, kind of the lead people in that work, and I know a number of our secondary folks came back and were like, we need him, because he is a secondary person, and he can help our secondary schools figure out ways to embed it within the day. So it's not relying just on after-school and before-school, which can be challenging, and not available to all kids, whether they have sports or other commitments that can't, that don't allow them to stay.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a few questions I'll jump into. At this point, do we know what a successful PLC might look like in our school district? Like, is like, you know, is it more disciplinary? Is it school-site dependent? Is, you know, how large will these PLCs be? I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of, like, what do we know now? What are we still working through?
Yes. So we are, first and foremost, we're getting our administrators, and then it will grow out to our teachers next year, of really understanding what a professional community is. What are those fundamental, the pillars, and the four questions, and really understanding how often you have to meet? What do you talk about? What data do you have to bring? You sharing best practices? You go out and try? Hopefully, you get opportunities to see each other teach, and kind of refine your practices, come back, see if it worked. And it's really intended to be on kind of a shorter-term cycle. So if I'm looking at one particular standard, it could be anywhere from four to six weeks, where, okay, this is the standard, we're all, say it's our priority standard, we want to make sure all of our kids are mastering it. And so at elementary, they will usually convene in their grade-level team. Secondary, it will be disciplinary, so by content, that's how they'll assemble. And so it's just, it's, that's what I like, it's that cycle of inquiry. We're learning, we're trying, we're doing something, and we come back, did it work? And we're constantly asking those questions of what, and I've seen it done where it's like, okay, well, how did it work out so well in your class? Your kids got it right. You know, they mastered it at a higher percentage, mine didn't. What did you do? And so they have that level of conversation, so they can share best practices, they can go in and model, or they can switch kids. Sometimes it's like, you know what, you've done really well with that skill, I'm going to send those kids to you to get that, and then so forth. So there's a lot of different ways. And the beauty of it, it really puts teachers in the driver's seat. They're in charge. They're the masters of their craft, and it just gives them the opportunity to do that work together.
Do you have a sense of what we're doing to kind of ensure that these PLCs are collaborative? I think one of the things that, you know, I've seen be a concern when it comes to PLCs is that teaching can be such a solitary profession at times, and so you run into this challenge where you have new teachers that don't want to let other teachers know that maybe they're struggling, or still like, you know, learning new things, as is totally natural when you're beginning as a teacher. And then you have veteran teachers who feel, who may feel that they have a good grasp and sense of their classroom, of their environment, and that this is just another obstacle that's like, another thing that they kind of have to go through. So, yeah, can you speak to any of the things that we're kind of keeping in mind or doing to kind of ensure that we kind of overcome as best as we can some of those existing cultural barriers within the culture of teaching?
I would say our teachers, and it's in research as well, and I got to see it as both on the teaching side, being, working in a PLC, and also from an administrative, as a principal, where we had PLCs. Our teachers, if anything, if nothing else, they got closer and more, they were able to build trust, be vulnerable, ask questions. You do have to have a set of norms, so you have agreements, kind of a community agreement you all agree to, so that it kind of sets the stage for how you're going to work together. But over time, you come to really rely upon, and what research shows is when teachers feel supported in that collaborative way, they tend to have more, one, they're going to get more success, they have, they enjoy, they kind of get revitalized by the teaching process. And so it's, it just creates that support system that they don't have when they're in isolation.
All right, thank you. And again, I think, I appreciate your asking, similar to Trustee Brown, like, kind of the implementation question. So that's how, as we do our end-of-year reporting, I think, and you might have answers now, but you don't need to share them. Like, considering how are we demonstrating implementation, I know that the district is working with Solutions Tree. So they have tools that, you know, can be used to see, you know, what level a PLC is working at, and most, yeah, and I'm asking when I visit schools, like, where are you with the work? And most are in the, just, you know, establishing the vision and the guiding coalition that's going to start thinking through what the particular needs are of that school. But that could be helpful to include in the final report.
Yeah. And then regarding MTSS, I think the real big question I have there is, I'm wondering if we have any sense of, like, capacity in terms of, like, you know, are we close to, if we just had a few more academic, you know, supports, or if we just had a few more behavioral supports? Or is it, we just don't know what even the edge of, like, what kind of supports it would take to fully meet the needs? Or is capacity even an issue as we move up to certain tiers? Like, is it a bigger issue in Tier Two versus Tier Three when it comes to, like, students? Like, do we have a bunch of students who need Tier Three supports, and we just don't have the capacity to, like, offer them those Tier Three supports?
So one of the things that I learned early on, I think it was a comment made by Dr. Mattos, because he was the guru, and he said, if 75% or more of your students need intervention, you don't have an intervention problem, you have a what-to-do-all-day problem. And that's what I think I value about the MTSS, is what can we do differently in that first universal access? What, in differentiationing within our classroom, so it doesn't get to the point where we are over-identifying? Because right now, I think that's where we're seeing our gaps, is that we don't have enough Tier Two supports in place. And so now we are saying, our students need specialized, for instance, like, there, we have to refer them, and they will qualify in some ways because they're so far behind. But it's, for me, when I look at it, it's a general ed, it's a general ed responsibility. We need to do, we need to find those ways to provide those supports early on and immediately, so that it doesn't get to this intensive level.
And then maybe moving on to UFLY, I think the one piece of curiosity I have is, what's the process that we're, that we're going through to process that feedback that we're getting? You know, I think you said we have, like, pacing challenges, like, is that all going back through a centralized with the work that Ms. Malin's doing? Or is it school-site dependent? Or are we processing through what we're learning about there?
She's kind of, she's managing those pieces. And so the monitoring right now, we use the BPST. That's the, one of the assessments that we use to monitor how our students are progressing. But then also, she's going to be submitting that survey, just kind of an implementation survey, how are things going? What's working, what's not working, what needs to be refined, so that we can improve that across the system, across the schools.
And then lastly, this is a question, I guess, more for Ed, but I definitely don't expect to have this answer. Maybe it's something that would be nice to kind of be thinking about in the future, but would love to know how well-targeted we feel specifically our S&amp;C funds are to those students, that that money is allocated there for? So I don't know if you have thoughts now, or just something to think about, like, in the future.
They all contribute. I mean, most of them. You want to talk about the contributing?
Right. So they're, the funds are all directed towards, well, the way the LCAP actions are set up, it's to meet the needs, not only just, there's, let me back up a second. I always need the think time, and I didn't take it. The way the LCAP goals are organized, and the actions organized through them, the LCAP money is designated as contributing to those actions. So, and that contribution really means that they're directed towards the improvement or the increase of services that we provide. So as our LCAP funds go up, we should see an increase, that kind of goes to your capacity question, we should see an increase in what we're able to provide and support. So that, I don't know if that's kind of getting to what you were asking about. We do also, within the LCAP, is we have focused goals. So for example, our foster youth, we have a focused goal and focused action specific to foster youth, specific to EL learners, specific to our equity multiplier schools, in order to address the needs that, for those schools that have those higher numbers of students.
Yeah, I mean, I think in general, that does address my question. I think maybe I'd like for us to be a little bit more, like, explicit in kind of where those values are coming from, because, right, there is these different approaches we could take with our LCAP, such that, yeah, we're using, thinking about these S&amp;C funds of how do we expand services that are going to, you know, ultimately help these students that these funds, that we get these funds for, these more vulnerable students, but also ends up helping a lot of other students? And that's one approach. Or we could be really thinking really intentionally about, how do we ensure that these funds are a lot more targeted to ensure that spending is more likely to be directly tied to spending on these students? to spending on these students through which we receive these funds for. And that's, I think, two different value directions of which, you know, I don't know how our board feels about that or how we feel about that as a district. But I think it'd be nice to explicitly call out like, what is our strategy here? And why are we doing these things? Because I think that's often a question that our community says is, if we're having these students, often students of color that are struggling, why are we not specifically spending money on these students? Or why is it, you know, or people will have the opposite reaction at times? And then why are we not ensuring that this money goes to all students? And I think calling out where does our values fit there can kind of help have a better conversation with our community and for us as a board.
I'll just add, our LCAP, so we are at eighty-one percent unduplicated students. So those are students that are socioeconomic, right? English learners and foster. That's what makes up the requirements of the LCAP. And so we have to demonstrate that we are, that that percentage of the funds are going to those students. And it's eighty-one percent of our kids, right? So it's, it's a big group. There's really not a lot of students that don't fit. It's very few. And so, yes, they are targeted. And when you go back into our LCAP, there are, they broke it down differently, right? So we had the broad goals, then we had focus goals, and then we had a kind of a maintenance of progress. So it's really outlined, I think, pretty well. And then there's the money attached to each one. So you can see exactly where the expenditures are going and what they're supporting.
Yeah, and that, that's an excellent point, right? So many of our students fall under that. So when we do things that impact just about all of our students, we are, like it's hard to target when it's near everyone.
Right.
I think that's an excellent point.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, unless there's any other questions from my colleagues, I think, thank you all so much. I think this was excellent and really folk, oh, did you have a comment, Jesse Cobosmith?
Yeah, I just had one more question. First of all, I'm looking, I'm looking at the data and thank you for updates. It's a lot cleaner to look at. But where, where is this SEIS dashboard? Is that public?
SEIS, that, no, that's a special education platform and it's, it's, it's really restricted on who has access because of the confidential information about students. Yeah. That's not public.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm so quick, you know, I'm kind of wondering about our foster students. When you said that the list was given to the principals, I was assuming that they would know who they were to begin with. But it seems to me that they would need extra attention plus for the attendance.
Right. So here's one of the things that we have done. We've already initiated in working with our site administrators is talking about something that is low effort or minimal effort, but hot, potentially high impact. Is when, when we know we are enrolling students that are foster youth or, or homeless youth for that matter, put them into that care team right away. Let's not wait for there to be a problem academically or social emotionally or whatever. We already know that they're coming in with a level of crisis and trauma. So let's just wrap them around with all the supports that we can give them and keep an eye on them. Because part of when you go into the care team, you stay there. You know, you stay, they monitor them regularly and they only come off if they're doing well. So it's just like, let's get them immediate care. Let's not wait.
Thank you. That was important. Glad you said that.
Yeah.
Great. Again, thank you again. I think this was a very excellent presentation. I think, I appreciate how candid this conversation was and I think the focus on specific strategies. And, you know, I think something that has been proven time and time and again is that the most effective boards and the most effective work that we can be doing here is when we're spending time talking about students. And I think that's what we spent a lot of this time talking about. So I think this was really great. Thank you. Moving on to number, item eight, hearings, we have none. Item nine, public presentations, we have none. And then item ten, consent items, we have items A through N. And then just want to note that we do have revised item H and that's sitting in front of everyone. That is the Certified Human Resources Report that just had a few additions on there. Is there any comments or questions about any of the consent items? Trustee Lathan? Nope, none today. Great. So then I'll entertain a motion to approve all the consent items as presented.
I want to do this one. I make a motion to approve. Items ten A through N.
Second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve consent items A through N with the revision to consent item H. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to eleven, action items. We have item A, reentry of stipulated expulsion, number E eight five three. This is the public portion of our closed session item. So I'll entertain a motion to approve this reentry.
I move to approve.
Great. It's been properly moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great. So it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the reentry of stipulated expulsion, E eight five three, as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Moving on to item B, board establishment of special education support services, ad hoc committee with no more than two board members, ad hoc committee to end on or before September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, per board bylaw ninety-one thirty, committee meetings. Superintendent Wayne, do you want to introduce this item or would you like?
Yes. No, I understand the board has expressed interest in doing a more kind of in-depth look at our special education services and to be able to know how to provide guidance and direction to ensure that we're supporting all of our students' needs. Here's what I recommend for the discussion tonight. It'd actually be helpful for the board to have a discussion on the purpose of the committee and what you hope to achieve, just to start to, to hear that. And then after that discussion, based on what I've heard, also based on kind of some thinking that the team has done, would make a few recommendations for how the committee could be structured. Then you can ask for volunteers of who wants to be on it. Well, then the board would approve establishing the committee. And then per your board bylaws, you could ask for volunteers. And ultimately, the president appoints members to the committee. So how's that sound like for a plan? So if you want to lead the discussion on, you know, what, what, what exactly, and you're not committing yourselves to anything, but we think could be helpful just to, to share with the community and the staff, what are you, what are you hoping to come out of the, the meeting? Uh, the committee?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, vice president.
Actually, this is coming before a few times that I personally feel that we need-
To have some connection with the families. And they need to have at least some ability to, to say what, I mean, to talk to within themselves, to support them and to have probably workshop, maybe presentations for them to understand the system. Because special ed is not easy to understand. And I just, we were looking at the idea of support for parents.
Other thoughts from board on, yeah, Trustee Cobosmith?
So we've been working on developing focus, focus groups to develop a hierarchy of needs. Because when I recently had a conversation with the teachers, I've been at a PAC meeting where parents did speak specifically, independently of their own accord of what they felt about special ed and about it not being on our community school goals. And so we realized that this problem is big. It's very big. And it's not, it's not isolated to us. So, and I have a fellow who's been in the literature. And one of the things that she felt, found is that it hasn't been really studied that much either. Like really, there are no solutions to the problems that we have, right? So one of the things that we thought about was developing a focus group for, to develop a hierarchy of needs. And that focus groups would contain, would contain teachers, it would contain parents, administrators, anybody who's interested and wants to come to the table to help us find some, some solutions to these problems.
And I would like to also add to what Trustee wrote just said in regards to families. It takes a lot, and I'm saying it from, I'm speaking to you as a parent as well, of a student who is autistic. So as a parent, I'm speaking on behalf of, I won't say the struggle, but the support, right? And so then speaking as a board member, wanting to make sure that every family out there, regardless of what level of autism or wherever spectrum they are, from A through Z or whatever their special needs are, that they feel supported. And then also our teachers. You know, teacher gets up in the morning and say, "I want to go to school." And just feel exhausted all the time. And just letting our teachers know that they are valued, so much valued by parents. And then building that bridge between the parents and the teachers. So they'll be able to communicate with them and express what their children's needs are. Because like you said earlier, Christine, that there, everyone doesn't need the same thing. My daughter may not need what the next, her classmate needs and this, and vice versa. So just making sure there's a committee of support, wraparound services. I am so in love with the care team that you were talking about and I'll be talking to you more about that. And just making sure that their voices are heard. If we say that we're here for children, then we should actually be here one hundred and ten percent for our children. But the children came from somewhere. They came from parents. So we don't want to leave our parents out and especially our teachers out either.
Any thoughts, Trustee Lathan?
Yes. Although I'm a little lost. What are we, like what are we?
We're just kind of sharing, sharing thoughts on like, what could be the purpose of this committee and kind of what things are important? I think, I don't know how good you are about synthesizing things, Superintendent Wayne.
May I ask a clarifying question that might help? Okay, so, no, so I'm hearing, let me, let me, I'm hearing definitely that when we're talking about our special education population, our students with special needs, there's a need to address, you know, how we're communicating with the families. Because they're involved in the IEPs. They're the ones who need to sign off on the services. It can be confusing for families. They may not know what's available. So the question is, is that, then is the, the purpose of the committee to, so the, the purpose of the committee could be to review what is being done to communicate and engage with families to then make recommendations around how we engage with families? If you want to just improve how families are communicated with, I don't know that there needs to be, that wouldn't necessarily be committee work, that would be staff work. But, but the committee could focus on, again, that, that's like the clarifying question. Is that you want from the committee to, the committee to be improving communication with families? I don't know that that would be its role or the committee to provide direction on how to improve communication with families after looking at what current practice is.
So for me, when I say, I mean communication across the board. Because it feels like, after speaking with the teachers directly, we had teachers that shared really significant concerns about not even having access to their students' IEPs in the classroom. So, so these are problems and these, and it wasn't just one teacher. Like teacher, other teachers were like nodding their heads in unison with them, right? So, and, and even from, like, and, and being in the PAC meeting, there was a parent who spoke up and referenced that their child was getting speech pathology in the hallway. You know, it's the middle of winter. Why, why are they in the hallway? Like, there's just something broken in our system. And I think that that's why I went, I, I want to improve communication and collaboration at all levels within our special, special education. And of course, that incorporates parents. Because to me, parents are always at the center. Because like you said, our students come from families. They don't come to us independent by themselves and then are separated, you know? They're, then are just our charges. But, so that's what I'm thinking of. So yes, it's definitely the support for the families, but it's in the grand scheme of things where we could improve communication across the board.
So then I would see the purpose of the committee, whether it's for families or beyond, then one of, one, if this is what you're saying, the, the purpose of the committee would be to, and one of its outcomes would be to examine kind of communication around special education, look at current practices, identify where there's gaps, and then make recommendations on how to improve communication around special education. That's why I'm just kind of honing us in on, okay, so, because there's a lot of things we could cover. So this is what's helpful from this conversation to see where we'd focus. I don't know if that helps you, Dr. Jag.
Mm-hmm. I don't really have anything else to add right now. Because it, like Dr. Wayne said, it is, it's a big beast. I, yeah, it's, it's very big. One thing I am curious about that could help with the data that you all collect, it sounds like you're doing some qualitative data, which is talking to parents. But also, I'm wondering, I know the district has reports from the state level in terms of different findings. So just some transparency around, like what, where are we actually in special, around special education? To me, feels really important, kind of like the equity audits. Like you can't, it's hard to address something when you don't know what the root cause is, right? And so like, what is the root cause of the lack of communication or the ineffectiveness in communication between families and, and teachers or the district office or directors? I don't know, whoever, you know, wherever the communication barriers exist. It feels like that type of data from the district could also be useful to help kind of unearth some of those root causes.
From the county district, right?
The state, California Department of Education, provided a report for our district. I haven't seen it. I don't think any of the board members have. I don't know what's confidential and what's not. So Christine Barra would know that.
So it's, we just did submit an update to our report back last month. And so I would offer to provide that in the Friday board for you to review because it is very detailed. It's, it's essentially the, our district's plan around special education and it identifies areas that were called out as needs. And then it provides information on where we are in providing or, you know, kind of changing practices and, and making improvements.
Is this the SELPA or is this something else?
It's, it's through the state and SIM. I'm gonna, the SIM plan, thank.
Again, in terms of the purpose, I think what you're saying, Dr. Jag, would be to, one of the purposes of the committee would to present and kind of, you know, the transparent feedback we've received on our special education program. So the district has kind of baseline understanding. Because you're right, with it, we've been identified as intensive or targeted level three. So we submitted a compliance and improvement monitoring plan. So what went into the identification of us as intensive and targeted three? Like there's likely some disproportionate referrals. And then, okay, and, and this might be, this is actually, when we get to talking about the structure of it, working off of this, then these reports and this, this SIM, the compliance improvement monitoring plan, with what we learned from the community and engaging with families and staff might be then what, what comes together, what bring, is brought together to surface recommendations for how the district can improve.
Good.
How do we feel about that? Does that feel like, we're not going to solve special education with a committee, but that feels like a lot, but within scope, I think. Everyone feel good about that?
Communication is what we're going to do and we're going to learn a lot because this is something, special ed has not been an open issue for us. We've heard a lot of families coming up to us at these meetings saying, identifying issues. And I felt like this, they have no place to go. We haven't had an opportunity to give them that place to go.
Trustee Lathan?
Education, sorry.
Yeah, no. Trustee Lathan, do you have another comment?
I do, I, you know, I love special education for many reasons. As part of my first career in education was a sped teacher, mild to moderate. But also just knowing, it feels like, like a culture shift is needed and we need to elevate students with disabilities. There is research out there. I don't remember the exact percentage, but most students with IEPs can graduate from college A through G, A through G prepared with a regular diploma. And we're not there yet, right? And so unless it's a student with severe cognitive delays, most students have IEPs because they have specific learning disabilities or speech and language. That, none of that prevents them from being high performing. If you go to places like Marin and other areas where you have high socio-economics, those kids are, you can't really tell the difference between students who have IEPs and who don't, right? And so I really want us to get to a place where we are elevating those students and the teachers. And specialists have so much to offer. They specialize in knowing how to modify instruction, make accommodations. And in those PLCs, if they're collaborating with gen ed teachers, like how powerful that would be in our district. So it was more, it's more of a comment than anything of my excitement of, of us as a board helping, working with the district to shift kind of the culture in terms of how we value our students with disabilities and their families.
Yeah, no, definitely strongly agree. Maybe we can move next to looking at the proposed like structure and some of the support pieces and see if everyone likes that or has any thoughts on that.
Yeah, and to summarize, here, here's what I heard. So the outcomes would be, one, just to establish the lay of the land in special education. And kind of maybe as a sub outcome, to do that by both looking at the data and the reports and feedback we've gotten- And kind of maybe as a sub outcome, to do that by both looking at the data and the reports and feedback we've gotten from the state and any we've gotten from the SELPA as well, that's our, our local plan. And then feedback we've gotten from staff, community and families. Two, to review the, I hear a lot about communication, review the communication and our processes around that to make sure that then we are proactively and maybe come up with recommendations. Two, more proactively communicate and make sure issues are being addressed. They shouldn't, the boardroom should be the last place people have to go to get something addressed, not the first place. And, and I know, you know, things come up in conversation, if I, I was gonna say, as an, as the educate, as right now, although interim, as the educational leader of the district, if I hear a teacher can't access their IEP, I'm sure Ms. Barra is the same. There's something wrong there that needs, you know, this level of intervention then because teachers have to access their, the IEP. So we can see where the breakdown is there. But anyway, so outcome is, is around communication and then, so around communication, I'm gonna say one more family. Oh, and then, and then to look at the current plans we have in place, particularly the SIM plan and use that as a foundation to then see, okay, what do we need to do to, you know, in terms of the, and you'll see the SIM plan, like what, what then do we need to do at a deeper level to really implement some of the changes that are necessary to improve special education services? So with that being said, here's just some recommendations. When we put the agenda item on, we put it as an ad hoc because we, meaning President Hernandez and I had talked about this, that, you know, I mean, it's helpful, like, I'm still learning your processes, but I know there's some standing committees, you know, but we don't, this is not, these are not issues that should last forever. So setting an end date seems important. And we thought it'd be helpful to consider that the end date be September 30th. And the work, even though it's not much time, at least culminates in an initial report and recommendations that could be provided to the new superintendent and the board in fall to help focus the work for the year. Also recommend that, like, you know, some board committees can be just, you know, board working with staff. This one feels really important to set up a structure where on the committee, there's also representatives from family representatives, representatives from our labor partners, you know, some site administrative representations. So we can work with whoever gets upon the, on the committee. But we recommend when you're approving it, that this is broader than just, you know, two board members and three staff. Because we want to hear from, you know, people in the schools, what their, their experiences are to inform any recommendations. And then third is, we're going to talk, third in terms of just facilitation of the, of the meetings. You know, the staff lead can work with the, with the board members. We might want to consider some external facilitation just so we can, you know, so those of us who are in the system can, can all can engage. And so we're going to talk with, but we also have limited budget. And so we're going to talk with the SELPA and with the county to see what sort of support they might provide, might provide for that as well. But maybe having a partner to facilitate it with the two commissioners, uh, two board members would be helpful. So there's, oh, and then, yeah, we, we recommend trying to move on this so we can have at least, you know, three meetings this school year. So we would start right after spring break. And so, and then, so then, then there could be some work time over the summer to then come with recommendations. And the last thing I'd say is, just know in that short period of time, we might find, you might find, as everyone on the committee, you know, we need like a full investigation. So FICMAT, you've heard of FICMAT, the fiscal, they have, they do reviews of districts, school services review, do reviews of special education. They come in and dive deep. That might end up being a recommendation from this. I just want to also manage expectations. We're not going to get that level in three months, you know, five months, but it, it sets the stage for where we need to go next. We might see, you know what, looking at our plan and our data, we have enough here to know where we need to target. But again, I just want to set the expectations of what will be accomplished between now and September 30th. So there are some parameters to think about. We can finalize with the two appointed commit, uh, board members, but wanted to put that out there. And give a chance if there's any questions or responses to that.
Yeah, any thoughts on that structure?
I like it, that's actually what I had in mind.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think, so, so the, as long as we like the structure, we like everything we've heard, the next step would be to motion and establish a committee.
My motion would be to establish a special education support service ad hoc committee with two board members. And that the timing would be ending on September 30th, 2025.
Perfect, is there a second?
A second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no, and the motion passes. So then lastly, it would be great to hear, I think I assume, based off some conversations we've had, but it'd be good to hear for volunteers of who we'd like to be the two board members on this committee.
I would, I would support Dee Dee to be, as a parent and board member, to be one of the individuals.
I would support that as well. I would also like to be the second person on the committee.
And that's, I think, what, what I had heard previously. And so, yeah, so I think we'll, you know, as long as, no objections to that. I think, yeah, let's have trustee Kobo Smith and trustee Brown be on this committee. Great, all right.
So you'll be hearing from us to meet like next week because we want to get moving on this, it's a priority.
I've already done some system mapping, I, I got stuff, I'm gonna show you.
Okay, great.
Great, moving on to 12 items for information discussion and action by board. We have item A, the California School Boards Association Delegates Assembly Election. So this year we have two vacancies to vote on for region seven. And we have a number of different candidates here. It'd be great to hear if someone has a strong opinion, otherwise I can kind of strongly lead us in a direction. If not, otherwise, because we have several candidates here and we do have to vote on this as a board.
I support two of them that are from the Brenwood community.
Great, can you name the, I think we're, I think, yeah.
Dear, I can't say her name, Dallas Jensen?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I think the other one is Tamela.
Yeah, so I think I'm also, those are the two people that I also like there, Twee Dow Jensen and Tamela Hawley.
Me as well.
Any other thoughts, objections? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to have our votes be for Twee Dow Jensen and Tamela Hawley.
Move approval.
Great, so it's been properly moved, is there a second? Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to vote for Twee Dow Jensen and Tamela Hawley as the sub-region seven vacancies on the CSBA Delegate Assembly. All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed say no, and the motion passes. And now we move on to item B, Superintendent Search Services slash Goal Development Consultation Services. Thank you, Bill, for your patience as we went through some of the other items.
Just before this item begins, just want to note, this is, you know, board work. You know, this is one of your major responsibilities to find the next superintendent. Appreciate you've engaged with McPherson Jacobson, very familiar with their work. And so for this, since this is board work, I'm just going to step down, let you, you, it's, it's really important that this process be focused on your needs and working with McPherson Jacobson for, to ensure that you have a good process that results in the right candidate for Antioch, so.
Thanks superintendent.
Here if you need me, but I'll, I'll be down there.
I appreciate that, we all appreciate that, thank you.
Give me a few minutes and I'll call.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you to everyone. This brings back a lot of memories. I've worked in a district not far from here grappling with all the very same issues. So it's all very familiar to me. Good evening, President Hernandez, Vice President Rocha, trustee Brown, trustee Kobo Smith and trustee Dr. Lathan. Thank, this, I'm Bill Spalding, one of the members of the team. We have two members of the team who are on assignment in Southern California, but will be joining us through audio. So I'll be leading from here, but they will be involved. Sounds like we got Dan's cell phone. Try Nicole. Anyways, this is Lucky Day, I like that one. So we have some items that are on the calendar and we, we really adhere to the calendar we shared with you several weeks ago in, in terms of, you know, what you can expect when. So tonight is really an update on where we are, kind of what we've been, where we've been and then kind of what comes next. We're now in the process. Oh, there she is, okay, good. Okay, I'll go and then I might just jump to her. Anyways, so we're now in the, the part of the process, which is really the, the stakeholder input process and the recruitment process. So this is kind of the middle, kind of the middle phase. So we'll be working with Maya and with, with your staff on getting to all these various constituency groups that you all identify that we should be talking to. We've had a lot of great progress in that. This is also when we do a lot of our recruitment going out and finding people. I can tell you now that we're hearing from people who've shown interest in this position. I don't, I don't, I'm not worried that you won't have a really good slate of candidates. I think you're in a really good shape. But I wanted to kind of start with where we've been, you know, kind of where we are as of today. So, no, that's not the right one, hang on. Okay, so we've done a lot of items, we've met with you, obviously, we've come up with the stakeholder groups. We've shared with you what the input questions are. We'll be meeting with these stakeholder groups and asking them four basic questions. And we're asking the same of you. One is, what is good about your district? Or, sorry, what is good about your community? The second one is, what is good about your district and your schools? Number three is, what are the issues that a new superintendent should know coming into the district? And number four are, what are the kinds of character, character that you want to have, should have? And we ask these questions, they're actually, even though they're very, four very simple questions, they're very revealing. So those first couple of questions, a lot of times help us in the recruitment process. Then we can talk up what's great about this community, what's great about this region. We can talk about what's great about this board, what's great about this district, what's great about these schools. We, you all, all districts, and we've already had some conversations, have points of pride, things that are going on. And I saw some things happening tonight that you ought to be very, very proud of. The model continuation high school, I've been trying to get that for a long, long time. So I know how, how big a deal that is and how important that is. So these are all things that we'll want to include. And then we'll be hearing that from various other groups. What's interesting as we do this is that it yields a lot of really good information. We put it into a packet, a report that we bring back to you, that will come next time when we're finished. And you'll see all of it. We'll do an executive summary that really tries to call the major themes, the major issues that came up. But you'll see the whole, the whole thing, all the raw data, and so will the candidates. And it gives them an opportunity to kind of see what should they be ready to take on when they come in the door, you know, if they are selected. And what they should be prepared to talk with you about in terms of their experience and their expertise in dealing with some of these issues. They also see, you know, from the two, first two questions, the, the reasons that you'd want to be a part of Antioch, the reasons you'd want to come to this district and this community. So we've gotten a, a number of, now, let's see, now my, my laptop's not working very well. You, you'll probably recall the number of very, various groups and constituencies that we'll be meeting with. And a lot of those, thank you Maya, have been scheduled already. So we're meeting with a couple of groups tomorrow, we're meeting pretty much every day, you know, for the next couple of weeks. And we'll have some others that we still have to, to get done. But most of them are being scheduled right now. The other thing that we, we did recently is that we, we had spent some time with you on the criteria. And I think it's ready.
Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, do you want to talk to that, Nicole?
Yeah, just, I want to back up just a little bit and hopefully everyone can hear me. And thank you for the grace for allowing us to join from a distance based on some travel conflicts. But I'm super excited about the stakeholder input schedule. And I, I think I heard everything about the schedule, I think it's about 14 stakeholder groups that Maya and, and the team has, has put together. So thank you all, it's a lot of work, it's like herding cats to do that, so thank you. But the other thing, just want to add to what Bill shared was the actual survey with those same four questions. It's actually live right now. So that survey link, I believe, was shared, I can reshare it. And it is something, again, that can be shared now to, to really enhance your input. So you can place on the website, you name it. I did want to acknowledge the request about the languages. And so we were able to do Mandarin and Spanish and English. Unfortunately, we weren't, we didn't have the capability to put it, translate to Farsi. So I know that there was also, I think, another version of that, maybe through your own website. So hopefully, if there's any issues, let us know, but that was one we just weren't able to do. So I wanted to give you a heads up on that. Even though we know it might be a smaller number of people, we still want to honor, you know, the fact that we want to get everyone's voices. So please let us know that becomes an issue.
And I would really, I, I would want to echo how important it is to get that out. And we, we spread these far and wide so that everyone can put in, because not everybody can make one of these meetings with us. So everyone can put it in from their home, from their, from their living room, and they can answer the very same questions. It all gets included. So when, when we're all done with that portion of, of this phase, you'll have a lot of information about just kind of how people feel, both employees and constituency groups and parents and whatnot. We're meeting with D-LAC, AAPC, PAC tomorrow, AEA Board, Special Education Parents, Police Chief. I mean, we're all, we're starting to really get to those groups in the next few weeks and, and we've, we've got them booked out for a little ways. So we still have some time to get some other ones booked. So those are going really, really well. The other thing that, that I wanted to get to, Nicole, if you're okay with this.
Yeah, we're good.
They, the position description, I think, I think we're good on that. We, we came together, you'll recall, last time, that we looked at all these different kind of samples of other districts and what they put out in terms of their criteria. And we're trying to kind of gather what you had to say and then just kind of, you know, mash it together and, and have it make sense. And we've sent that out, I think people have seen it, I think people are okay with it. We're prepared to send it to the, to the home office so they can put that brochure out. So if there's no other concerns or issues with it, I'd like to kind of get that green light from you to go ahead and get that brochure out. Maya, I'm seeing head nods, is that, is that good? Okay, so we're in a good place, Nicole, we've got that criteria.
Okay, so the final, so just to make sure I hear clearly, because once the, the green light is tonight, we just want to update the advertisement on all platforms and make sure the application is fully updated. And so just making sure that language, the preferences was good, because I know we had a big discussion on that. And then also, I know all the dates are still the same, we're good to go. So if everyone's good, definitely we'll get that rolling and tomorrow will be an immediate update on all of our platforms. So I'm hearing yes, I can't see y'all, but I hear.
Yeah, they're nodding.
Yes, you're hearing nods all around.
Loud nods.
And then one last piece to add to that, and Bill, I don't know if you went deep into the advertising when we were transitioning to the audio. But with the advertising, we talked a little bit about, okay, once we, you know, update this criteria, the advertisement would go to multiple venues. So I don't think there's any changes to the venues y'all requested, but I did want to give one update that we had asked about CASA, which is the California Association of African American Superintendents and Administrators. And so what we found is that they had asked, they said that their process was that the district needs to be a member and you have to post it with CASA directly. So I wanted to give you that as a heads up, it's not something they allow us to do through our McPherson space. But I will tell you, because of the relationships that I know I have and our team has, that we can still, we have access to CASA members and it will still be something that's promoted, whether you do, you know, an actual official advertisement with them or not. So I just wanted to give you that heads up. And then the other was your California Association for Asian American and Pacific Islander Leaders. And so that one, we're still doing a little research, they're a newer group. So there was no fee that we found out about at this point in time. But if it is something you're still interested in, we'll still be pushing, because again, there's relationships there as well. So I'm excited about that. And so, in, in fine, in, in finality with the advertisement, you remember we talked about there are some fees that are included, you know, the fees for advertising, some of that is included in the contract and then you have some additional costs. And at the time, I believe I shared it somewhere, maybe around 1,500, give or take, you might recall that. And so in calculating based on what we have so far, it's about $1,800. And that is partly because of the brochure, is, you know, it's two pages right now. And we're going to assume with your blessing, you want four pages because the four includes the, the actual job description. So if you all are okay with that, we just want to make sure that you're good, that that would be the additional amount and, and that we talked about the last meeting, but didn't want you to be surprised. It's not uncommon, but, you know, it just want to make sure you all were okay with the advertising costs as well as the final criteria that we would use to update advertising.
Is everyone okay with that? Any thoughts? Yep, nods all around.
Excellent, all right.
The next, the next item on our, on our list, Nicole, was the, the stakeholder interview panel. So what we were going to talk about is that it seems like there's a broad interest in, in having a stakeholder input panel that would do the interviews as well as the board. And remember, this is an interview that is done in, with confidentiality, there's no rating or ranking. This is not, you know, it's, it's not people making that decision. But it is getting that input to come back to the board and say, here's what we saw as strengths and, and, you know, areas of growth for each of these candidates. And it just gives you that other perspective. So what we're going to need for the board to do between now and, you know, actually to solidify at the March 19th meeting is to come up with that composite. at the March 19th meeting is to come up with that composition and, and with some names. Because what you're going to have to do is certify it as a board subcommittee, you know, so that it's, it's subject to all the laws of, of a board subcommittee. So, you're going to have to do that. And that gives us enough time to make sure that it's solidified, that people are contacted and, and that they're scheduled for when those interviews are going to take place. So, that's, that's kind of your homework between now and, and the next board meeting. Did I miss anything on that, Nicole?
Yeah, no, it, it's actually perfect. So, one of the things, because we know you all are tired and you're not going to remember half of the things that we say tonight. So, we're going to follow up with you to make sure you hear all the numbers that I'm about to share because your brains are going to go, okay, this is a lot. But to Bill's point, you do need to make sure you consider the composition. You all were pretty, I think, clear as far as thinking like, yes, we want to have a, a panel with our stakeholders. And I think I also heard you may want to do one that's separate with, with the students, maybe having student panels. So, we can talk about that. But one of the things you have to consider during this time is, remember, this is, you know, a space where between Bill, Daniel and I, we all will be kind of facilitating with these interview panels and with any part of the interview. So, I want to make sure you hear that because sometimes boards get a little concerned about confidentiality and the process. So, we actually facilitate to make sure that process goes really smoothly for you. So, when you think of composition, and, and Maya, just appreciate you partnering with us, you know, yet again, because we all, we definitely need our point of contact to do this. And I'll reshare this again. But with the composition, typically in an interview panel, we'd say no more than 15. And there's a couple of ways you can consider that. You know, one is, you know, you can evenly split the staff and the community and the parents and maybe have a student. You can just, you can say, hey, we want to, you know, increase any number of those stakeholders. So, you may say, hey, we want to have three students, you know. But we want to make sure you have a balance of representation. So, for an example, you might say, hey, we're going to have seven staff, seven community, one student. And in that staff, there's a combination of folks, right? Or you could say 10 staff or a community, one student. Like, you can make it however you want. Some have done 20 members. We don't recommend it, but because you may want to have lots of representation, we can do it. But it just, you know, the more, it gets more complicated. Definitely, you know, anything past 20, it is really kind of hard to, not only manage, but it becomes hard when you think about the questions. You want to have each person be part of asking questions. And so, after a while, you just run out of time. So, everyone's not going to be able to ask questions. So, remember, your classified staff, you have your admin, you have your teachers, really breaking that up. You have maybe a D-LAC members. You may have some general PTO or school site council, parents or leaders. You may be community members. So, think of those folks because you're actually, as a board, going to need to consider what the, who's those names are that you're going to want to kind of appoint in those roles. So, typically what happens is your unions typically, you know, your classified staff and your teacher unions go, usually are the ones that say, hey, we're going to recommend the folks from our membership. And that's very typical. Sometimes boards will decide on a district administrator, right? And maybe even principals. You may even say, hey, you know, some districts, they say, hey, principals, you all kind of appoint someone to represent the principal group. So, you, you can decide, you know, how you would like to do this. But you do have to actually name the individuals. And we also recommend you have an alternate for each of those groups because it is a commitment of both days. You remember, you have May 1st and 2nd. So, at this point, you don't know who you're going to interview, but you're probably going to use both of those days. And those stakeholders need to be there for both days unless something changes drastically and you only have a few people you're interviewing and then you only need them one day. So, this is super important as you consider that March 19th meeting because you have about a month to really figure out who it is that you're going to have as part of this. Lastly, is that there may be some volunteers, folks who are interested and really want to be a part of the process. So, you also are welcome to, you know, open it up for that of people like, hey, I want to be a part of it. But in the end, you all are going to have to make that decision by the, by March 19th, as Bill said, at a regular board meeting because you have to take action for this kind of ad hoc subcommittee. So, I'm going to pause for a minute because that's a lot. And again, you may not remember everything tonight. I'm going to reshare what I've shared with you in writing. I actually have a document that I'll summarize for you. And then we'll work with Maya closely. And, and President Hernandez will do the same, you know, just to make sure you all feel really comfortable. But every board member is a part of this. Like, all five of you, make sure you have selected potentially one or two board, uh, community members, right? It's typically what boards, board members do. So, I'm going to pause again for a second and see what questions you have or thoughts you have about the stakeholder interview panel.
I guess I'm wondering, in practice, how does this typically work? Like, are we each coming with three people in mind that are fitting these various different categories? Or are we potentially coming with, you know, our own idea of what a, of this composition of 15 should be? And then kind of hashing that piece out? Are we getting people to confirm beforehand? Or do we have ideas of people and then we'll ask them? I guess I'm wondering some of the, the, like, small pieces here.
Yeah, you should decide first. Because remember, this is your interview process. So, you are deciding your composition. And then from that point, that's when you say, hey, we need to go through, like, our teachers. And we reach out usually to the teacher, uh, union president. And you ask, hey, who is it that you want to have represented? So, you start with the composition first. And then you build from there. Does that make sense?
Now, when you say you, do you mean that us as a board right now should decide that composition? Or you as in, like, each of us individually?
Tonight would be good to decide that, yes, yes. And then from there, then there is some work that would happen between now and the 19th, where I know Maya would have to communicate with some of you around, like, who you recommend individually because you may have, you know, that one person who's a community member. And then you may have, like, an alternate that you want to name as a board member. So, we usually say every, you know, time we do this, every board member should have at least one person that you have selected for that process as well. And you don't have to do it that way, but that's typically what we've seen in practice.
So, Nicole, you're looking for a composition tonight, correct?
Yes, because Maya, Maya and the team, you know, who would kind of help support that process needs to have some direction. Because March 19th is going to come fast. And remember, there's a little bit of conversation that has to happen. There is some language that I can share with Maya around just, you know, how you outreach to folks about this. But it is going to go pretty quickly. And so, you want to make sure tonight you do decide, like, what do you want that composition to be? And it could be adjusted, by the way. You know, you're going to get to March 19th and you actually may see, hey, we have, you know, this number of people and you have to make a decision. And, I mean, we've even gone as far as we've had, like, almost too many people. We had to eliminate some. So, we, like, put names in, like, a little drum and just randomly pick names. I mean, we've gone that far. But it really starts with you deciding how you want that representation to look.
Nicole, with the number of ones that you've done, do you, do you have any particular recommendations for what a composition might look like?
Yeah, 15 is what I, I usually go with. Again, if it's a larger district, and you all are kind of on the larger side in comparison to some of the others, I've seen 20, but it just becomes harder to manage. Because remember, typically, they have about an hour, maybe an hour and 15 minutes. And it's really pushing it. But the schedule doesn't allow for that many people to be able to ask questions and get through the process. So, 15 is what I'd recommend. And if you feel like you need to increase it, you can. But I would start with the 15. So, if you said, hey, let's look at, you know, seven staff members, for example. Like, what does that seven include? You know, you got to think of your teachers, your admin, your classified, right? Seven community members, what does that seven include? You know, I'm, I'm putting that one out there also with your students. You want to make sure you have at least one student. You may want to have more. So, then that would take away from maybe community, which includes parents. And as, like I mentioned, you have some parent leaders, right, from your D-LAC, your site councils, you name it, PTA.
Do you have a recommendation within that 15 of how you would divide it up?
I, I would say, I'm looking at, you know, thinking, if you're going to do 15, maybe you consider, like, two admins, you know, like your, your principal. Maybe you have a principal and then you have a district administrator, right? So, maybe have two admins. In your teacher space, you know, at least having two teachers. Usually, you know, you have one that's from, like, your membership and one from executive board. Same thing for classified. You know, you want to think about making sure representation from classified. And then you have your, your, what am I saying? Your community members, right? So, if you pulled out community, I'm sorry, let me back up to parents, right? So, you have parents. So, you may want to say, hey, I want one parent. And I, again, I don't know your parent structure, but you have some parents and you may feel like, I know exactly what I want on because they're very active in some space. So, you may want to have, you know, two to three parents in this space. It kind of depends on, you know, who, who that is that you want to consider. And then go into your community members. You're having maybe two community members. And I think it's room for two students, if I'm doing my math right. And correct me if I'm wrong, Bill, I'm not sure if you're tallying up right now.
I'm tallying it up, but I'm slow on math. That's 11.
Okay, so I'm missing then your, your community members. If y'all add a community member, that would be potentially three. And did you include the two students?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you included your, your three parents.
Oh, yeah, three parents.
Yeah, that might be the group that I was missing.
Okay.
I got the three parents. Yeah.
Now we got 15.
Pretty much covers your, your entire stakeholder group, if that makes sense.
So, two admins, two teachers, two classified, three parents, three community members and two students. Takes us to 15, if I'm doing my math correctly.
How do people feel about that? I kind of, and I'm flexible on this, but I'm always, I think, I'd like more students. I think that's always the group that I think I want the most feedback from, that I think matters most to me in getting, at, at most representative of that. But I think otherwise, the rest of this, I think, looks very good to me. But I wonder what other thoughts Maya fellow board members have.
I need to hear them again.
So, we have two, two administrators, two teachers, two classified, three parents, two communities, two students. I wonder if you, if you made, if you swapped out a parent for a student and if you had two parents and three students?
Yeah. I think, do we have the ability to kind of, I guess, be flexible depending on, like, who we kind of get from people? Maybe when it actually comes to us making that choice? I don't know if we'll get a bunch of students that seem interested in this or not.
I think there's some flexibility. I think you're, now, if you have kind of a, a straw number, you're going out and trying to find the people who would be those people. Then you'd be coming back on the 19th with both the composition and the membership to actually approve that, correct?
And remember, you need alternates too. I'm not sure if y'all can hear me, but yeah, you need alternates as well. So, in those same groups, always think you have one alternate just in case. Because there has been moments where someone, you know, was sick or couldn't commit at the last minute, something came up, which is very rare. But you do want to make sure you have alternates so you don't lose that representation. And remember, the commitment has to be both days. So, we don't ever want one person to come one day and then another person the next. We've had maybe a few exceptions to that rule. But it's super important that there's consistency and fairness to all the candidates, that that same panel that sees one candidate should see all the candidates and that there's not a, you know, now a discrepancy with the, the people who are involved with the process, if that makes sense. But remember, alternate. You want to make sure we have an alternate for each of these groups, just to be on the same side. And you do have to approve the alternates, by the way, too, on March 19th.
We did, yeah, I mean, that could be among the community members, I suppose? Or if you wanted to change and add that as a, as a group?
If we're giving up seats, I would rather not give up a parent for a student. I would rather give up a community for a student. I just think parent, the parent voice is very important and it spreads across a lot of different ages and grades. It's, I mean, if we're hearing from students, we're most likely going to hear from high school students. But there's still a lot of elementary students and middle school.
So, if we did that composition, we'd have two admins, two teachers, two classified, three parents, two community members and three students.
I mean, I'm also okay with keeping it two students, I think. If that feels something that the board would like, I'm kind of open to you there.
Any of it, I think, for the parents, it would be nice to have an elementary, middle and high school parent, like, at different levels.
I agree.
And then for students, probably middle, um, high school students, especially if they've been here for a while. And I'm okay with two. In my mind, I'm thinking of the two that were on the Equity Committee because they were consistent. But.
I would also like two, two of the different, at least two campuses. Because we have three high schools, right?
Oh, that's very true.
Dodger, Libby, Antioch. I mean, Antioch gets tapped a lot, I think. It was nice to hear some Deer Valley students tonight.
Yeah.
And, and then there's also the continuation too.
Yeah.
Like Bidwell.
Prospect, Bidwell. Oak, Live Oak.
I think the sticking point is two or three students.
Or we just, you know, she said up to 20, but that's not what's, what's recommended. So, maybe we just do 16. And we have three students.
And we only have 14 right now. And when I'm doing the math, I'm, so we actually could do another student.
Okay.
14, you're right. You're right.
All right, there you go.
Okay, so let's add.
So, two admins, two teachers.
You're only bringing two community people though, in, right? Three community or two?
So, I'm, I'm showing two admins, two teachers, two classified, three parents, three community members, three students. That's 15. Does that work?
Yeah.
They're all in the education field. I don't know, some, like, like the community members. To me, parents are a part of the community members. And it feels like I would rather switch out and have another teacher on there versus having three, um, community members because parents are also part of the community. So, I would rather have more staff, another staff member. Especially if we do special education staff, high school, maybe elementary. Like, it feels like it just kind of expanded.
Yeah. Yes, I'm leaning towards, I think the, the community members give us some flexibility on voices that we maybe don't hear very often. Like, we're going to hear, maybe not in that stakeholder group, but throughout, you know, the process from probably a lot of staff more often than we'll hear from, like, community members. Because this is, whether we like it or not, this is a space for our, more often a space that's seen, like, a space for our teaching staff, for the education community, for people that work in this school district and less for, like, people to come outside. So, I think finding ways to create opportunities to make people feel welcome and that they can kind of share this feedback a little bit more intentionally is, I think, where I would lean towards. So, I think if it's, yeah, unless there's strong feelings about that, I think maybe the original composition we had feels okay to me.
So, when I'm thinking about community leaders, I'm thinking about someone from the city council. I'm also thinking about someone from mental health and even maybe a nurse. You know what I'm saying? Someone that, because you have school psychology, right? You have a psychologist in the school. So, you, so that's what I'm thinking about, community members. Like, someone out, like you said, outside of the, the education scope.
Yeah, so I think naming that as a community member spot, I think, gives us that flexibility to see who could that be.
Two admins, two teachers, two classified, three parents, three community members, three students? Okay, there's our magic 15. Okay. And there's some flexibility with it, as you were saying. Like, community members might be a business leader. You know, so, yeah, okay. Last item that, well, there, we got a couple more items. Last item that I had, so we, there's been some new legislation the last few years about advertising what a salary is going to be for a position that you're going to, you're going to put forward. So, we have a copy, unless something's changed, of the AMA Senior Management Salary Schedule for 2324. And there is an item, line 734, which shows a six-step range for the superintendent's salary. It's actually on a management schedule. So, are we to assume that that would be what we would advertise, the high and the low in that range?
I think that's what makes sense.
For our own salary schedule for superintendent?
Yeah.
Yes, although when I looked at it, I think our high is up to, like, $500,000, maybe more. And so, I don't know if that would be something that we, no. Did I look at the wrong thing?
If you, if, oh, yeah, it's just one line.
Just one line, all right.
So, it's, it's 312 to 353.
Yes, that makes sense. Because I'm like, I don't, yeah.
So we're okay to go ahead and advertise that as part of our brochure? Okay. Got that. Um, Nicole, you were going to talk a little bit about governance practices.
Yeah, just real quick, also, just, you know, we do, uh, create the advertisement and include the range, but we do let people know it's still negotiable, because that is the reality of, you know, signing superintendent contracts. So, um, just want to give you a heads up, is although we will share the range, we do talk about it's negotiable, because, uh, again, you have a budget, obviously, you have a range, but also you don't know who your finalists will be. So there's some other parameters that you'll consider. This is just the base salary. But what you'll end up doing is, we, we often say, you know, you'll end up talking to your attorney, you'll make sure you look at the parameters, and you want to prepare, go moving forward, because you don't want to do this at the last minute, right? It's a lot. So this is something that you want to just start to keep in mind, like, what are those parameters going to be? Um, so you just prepare for that. Um, so I just want to share that. So thank you for that affirmation, because that really helps us in our recruiting and also just our advertising. Um, I heard that, uh, step seven thirty-four, uh, three hundred and twelve, and thirty-nine, and then the high is three hundred and fifty-three, forty-five, if I heard that correctly.
Yeah, that's correct.
And again, it's based on twenty-three, twenty-four. So that was the other thing. I think you all approved that back in April. Um, so the other piece is if there is anything that, um, again, negotiable, like, again, these are, this is based on what we have from your current scale, but just wanted to make sure we were clear on that. Um, so yes, I think, Bill, we were on this last piece, right? Am I hearing that correctly?
Yes.
I hate I can't see you all and talk at the same time. So, um, one of the things that you all had mentioned in the very beginning, you, you inquired about, one, just the search process, and you wanted to have support in creating the goals and objectives for the superintendent, once you hire that person. And as you know, that's part of the contract. But also, there's an element of really honoring the fact that you all are in a space where you're, what I call, a newer board coming together, because you have different people in different ranges. I was looking again at that brochure, and I'm like, you all have such, you know, great, um, diversity of, of experiences, that it's still kind of a new team, if that makes sense. And so often what we say is, as you're preparing, you, you have the unique opportunity, as you're preparing for your new superintendent, you can start to really engage in some collective, you know, professional learning that, um, is centered around effective governance practices, um, while also really connecting the dots to the fact that you're going to have a new superintendent coming in, and you're going to have to obviously set those goals and objectives for the suit, which also means you have to think about your own priorities and goals and objectives, right? And there's a lot that's centered around effective governance. So one of the things that I shared, uh, with your interim, and, um, also, you know, want to share with you all in the long run, is that I, we recommend you have training, right? Formal training. Some have gone to CSBA, right? Some have done some MIG training. But collectively, it's great to do effective governance work with the whole board and with a trained consultant. Um, I know Bill can attest to this, I can attest to it as well. Uh, we made a recommendation, um, of Deborah Keys Wright, which is Wright Keys to Consulting. She does a lot of board training, um, around the nation, and has done a lot with us. So I'm glad to hear you all are committed, right, to that work. But here's what we also want to do, is make sure that during the search process, we just do a couple of drips here and there, right, of just reminding you and connecting those dots. So, um, making sure, you know, if there are questions along the way, we, you know, Bill and I have kind of reached out to each of you, we want to stay connected, but just reminding you about, as you're going through the process, we may make some connections as we observe, you know, board meetings, and in our process, we may talk about just connecting the dots for that effective governance. Um, and so just remembering, you know, the role of the board and the superintendent, we'll make references to that, right? We'll talk about, you know, the fact that, hey, we know you all are going to be working on your goals and your objectives as a board, your priorities, but also, you know, there's going to be some protocols and norms that you'll be continuously, you know, forming together. So we're excited about that. And, and ultimately, because we know this process, we want to have a, what we call a transparent process. We also want you all to be really strong as a team, all five of you, when you get to the end of this process. So our goal is going to be that when you pick your finalists, you know, all five of you are like, yes, this is our finalist, we're all on the same page, and you have a really good start, right, to your new year, which will start July first. So we're going to share a couple of themes, but the great part is, is, uh, Deborah's an amazing facilitator, so she's going to connect a lot of the dots, and we'll, you know, watch some of those if possible, so that we can make sure, as we're going through this process with you, that we're connecting the dots to things like, hey, you have five criteria you just approved, that should start to be the lens by which you start to think about your own goals and your own priorities, because we want everything to be aligned. And Bill can attest to it, uh, you know, Dr. Dan can attest to it as, as superintendent, former superintendent, right? This is so critical to the work that you all called out around having an equity leader, right? And some of the things you want to do, you want to make sure that this process is very, very much aligned. And so we're excited about that. You're at a great start. Um, we know that there's going to be some things that are just nuances that you'll, uh, you know, all be, it'll be new, but, um, with the work with Deborah preparing you along the way to do that work as five, you know, governance team members, um, we'll get to the end, and then we'll go into the goals and objectives. And that's when we'll actually try to connect the dots for you, probably simultaneously with her, um, working with you as well. And that's when it starts to go into your direction of the new superintendent, you know, the first hundred days, right? The direction the board is giving. But right now, you want to really practice those things. So there's a couple of things she'll share with you. We're going to be watching meetings, but we may bring things up just along the way to make sure we're connecting the dots. So, you know, I think you're all in a great place, super excited and honored to work with you. If you have questions about the process itself, and even how it connects to some of the work, um, around good governance, definitely reach out, because it's a lot, um, I know. And so, um, I just, I wanted to just kind of give that plug in. So again, super excited that you all have, have, you know, made that commitment. And, you know, to, um, Dr. Wayne's point earlier, you know, about this is your process, so, you know, it's open, transparent, he's kind of demonstrated, hey, it's even interim, you know, he's going to really give you all that space to work through your process and really do that training. So I, I'm really excited for you all to get a, a good start to the next steps of an amazing journey with your, your next superintendent, and just again, honored to be a part of the process. So with that, um, I don't know if there's any questions or comments, but, uh, we will follow up, because again, you're going to forget half the things we said tonight, because you got a lot tonight. But we'll make sure we connect with Maya and each of you to make sure you're all feeling really good about the process. And, uh, it's, it's rolling, so we're excited.
Any questions?
No, just on the survey. I'm more concerned, me, right now, it's the surveys.
Okay.
In two languages, you correct?
The surveys are in, um, Spanish, English, and are, there was...
Mandarin.
Mandarin, yeah.
Okay. So that in order for our families to get on, they would go on to the, uh, school district? Is that the way it's going to go?
Yeah, we'd like it on the district website.
So it was put on the district website today, and then also pushed out to all the individual school site websites. Um, you can't go to our website without having a dialogue, a text box come up that, that advertises the survey. And then it's, so, and then it's also on our homepage.
Okay.
And so we're going to be sharing tomorrow with the principals that, you know, making them aware that it's there, so that they can also share it out in parent communications and meetings.
Thank you.
Is it, is it possible for you to forward the QR link to us as well?
It's, it isn't a QR link, it's just, it's a survey link, but I could, it's on our district website, and I also forward it to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and as we're meeting with our constituency groups, we'll be also pushing it out and telling people, tell your friends, you know, to, to do this survey, so.
I can't do it.
I have a constituency that I'm still connected with, that I've already...
And I'm sorry, I can't, I, I'm trying to hear you all, it, it's tough. But, um, I think, I, I think I've heard everything that, that you, I think you have it all right. And just maybe adding one piece is be super creative as you can with that, use your students also, because I think, I, I think I shared this with you, we want to make sure your kids really have a voice on this. So using your student leaders, leverage your principals, you know, and just get it out there, because the reality is those meetings we're holding, everyone's not going to be able to attend, it's just the nature of it. So, um, using that, that survey is great. I'm glad you all have it on the dialogue box on your website. Um, we also have it on our website as well, um, so, super excited about that. And so, um, yeah, there's no questions. Maya, I will, again, follow up as normal and, and make sure you all are, you know, up to date on where we're at, and just, you know, appreciate the hard work.
All right, any questions? I don't think so. All right, thanks, Bill.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you allowing me to join from, from afar. Take care, everybody.
You too.
Bye-bye. All right, next, moving on. Uh, thirteen resolutions for first reading, we have none. Fourteen resolutions for immediate action, we have item A, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization. So I'll turn over to Dr. Martinez.
Yes, this is a standard resolution that you've seen in the past, basically allowing individuals who are credentialed to teach outside of their credential area. Uh, there are several individuals providing home hospital, uh, service and a leadership assignment. So again, uh, the board is able to approve this, then they are allowed to stay within an assignment that is appropriately connected to their credentials.
So unless there's any questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the resolution.
I move to approve the resolution as presented.
Miss Second.
Great, it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, Forty-Six, authorizing instructors to teach outside of credential authorization for the Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five school year. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes.
Correct.
Moving on to item B, Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, Forty-Seven, reduction or discontinuance of classified services for lack of work or lack of funds.
Yes, we do bring before you a resolution that is calling a resolution for reduction in force to the classified service. Now, as we've mentioned over the last couple of budget meetings, uh, this is a very small reduction in force, which is a good thing for the district. Uh, we do have several positions that have been vacant for some time within the district, and again, there have been limitations to hiring and/or decisions made at the site that we don't have, uh, the continuing need for these particular services. It doesn't mean that those services are not important in the grand scheme, but at this point in time, again, the budget that is there to have these vacancies would be taken back to a slight degree, so that those dollars can be used in other parts of the priorities of the budget. So there are several vacant positions that we're removing at this point in time. Before we just took those away, we do need the resolution, which provides guidance to the district human resources team to then work with the employee association. This happens to be CSEA, so we have engaged in conversation with CSEA about this. Uh, there is an opportunity that after the resolution is done, if there are impacts and affects negotiations, that we would work with CSEA to determine if there's any other solutions to go forward with. Uh, we do have three other, uh, assignments, if you will, positions where there are site positions. And as, again, the board is well-understood, we have school site funds that are designated by those school site plans. Sometimes in a school site plan, the decision is made by the school site councils, that we need to have different services going into the future. So that is what's happening with some of these assignments, uh, potentially a three and a half hour a day position at one place. They can't afford that with their own funds going into next year, because they've made different prioritizations. So again, the impacts to people are very slight. We believe we have positions for all of these people to keep everybody who wants to work, working, but they may not be at these sites under this budget constraint. Again, we have worked with CSEA, uh, to implement this, and so we're being very sensitive to the individuals. You notice that no names are here, this is just the positions. So we do ask for approval of the resolution, so we can move forward in the process. And it is governed under Education Code that we give enough notice to the impacted employees, uh, so it's a March fifteenth notice date as well, uh, but we need the resolution to be able to go forward.
Any questions or discussion? I think I just want to say that I appreciate the thoughtfulness. I think there's always, uh, behind these things, there are people, and no matter how small or how large amount of people it is, people and, uh, people's lives, uh, get affected. Um, I think, um, the, the good news, as you said, is that, um, you know, some districts are making much tougher decisions, and I think because of some good planning, um, we've had to make decisions that are a little bit less impactful, and I think that's a, that's a good thing. Um, but nonetheless, this does affect people. Um, but with that said, I will entertain a motion to approve, uh, this resolution.
I move approval of Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, Forty-Seven, reduction of discontinuance of classified services for lack of work and lack of funds.
Great, it's been properly moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, so it's been properly moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Twenty-Twenty-Four, Twenty-Five, Forty-Seven, reduction or discontinuance of classified services for lack of work or lack of funds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say no. And the motion passes. Uh, moving on to fifteen resolutions for second reading and action, we have none. Uh, sixteen board policies for first reading, there are none. Seventeen board policies for second reading and action, there are none. Eighteen information items for general information, there are none. Uh, and nineteen future agenda items from, uh, board members. Uh, maybe we can start with, uh, Trustee Lathan, any future agenda items?
No.
Uh, Vice President Rocha?
None.
Uh, Trustee Kobo Smith?
No.
And, uh, Trustee Brown?
None.
Great. Moving on to twenty additional comments, which exceeded the first thirty-minute session limit, uh, we have none. Uh, twenty...
Sorry, I do actually future board, um, items?
Yes.
Sorry?
Yeah, no, go ahead, Trustee Lathan.
Um, I'll talk about it with the comments as well, but, um...
So maybe we can go ahead and move to twenty-one reports, comments from board members, um, and we can start with you, Trustee Lathan.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm tired. So, um, so we had our first, I'm pleased to share that we had our first City Schools Board Committee held on Monday, February third. It was a productive and collaborative start to our work. Uh, we officially selected our committee leads, which is City Councilwoman Tameisha Torres Walker and myself, fiscal chairs. The committee established community agreements, which is how we agree to work together to ensure alignment and effectiveness. Yes, we are under Brown Act, but we also wanted to just create norms for ourselves or community agreements around how we agree to work together. And, uh, we engaged in a visioning activity, which led us to define our central focus for now, but we also agree that it's kind of, uh, work in progress, because as we learn more, we might decide to kind of change that. But for now, it's whole childhood, whole community. Um, and it's a framework that emphasizes the interconnected needs of students, families, and the broader community. What was nice about the meeting, and, um, Trustee Kobo Smith is a part of the committee as well, so feel free to share. Um, but what was nice was that there were, uh, myself, uh, City Councilwoman Torres Walker, Trustee Kobo Smith, um, and, um, Mayor Protem, uh, Rocha, Louis Rocha. But we also have the City Manager there and the Director of Parks and Rec there, which was really nice, because we got kind of a well-rounded, um, kind of conversation. Um, and we recognize that we need district-level people as well. Since there, this is the very beginning, and it was around visioning, I think it's okay. Um, but at some point, we'll need some district-level folks to participate. Looking our, ahead of, uh, to our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, March tenth at three PM, uh, here in the boardroom. And during this session, we will be bringing together data from both the city and the school district to conduct just a preliminary needs assessment, just to kind of get an understanding of some of the data you shared today. Um, Ms. Ebar will share in other, uh, data as well from the city and the district. Um, and this is just so that we can kind of do a cross-analysis of needs, um, because our whole, I kind of, thinking around this is building long-term, thinking of a plan from, you know, community age, like, young children all the way through adulthood. And so in order to do that, our goal is to really think about kind of some cross areas of need. I met with the mayor of the, of Antioch, so, uh, Mayor Ron Bernall after this meeting, so like a week or so later, and, um, shared with him, and he heard good things about the meeting, and he said, what was different now? What happened? And what I shared with him is, we all came in, at, at least from my perspective, as the person who facilitated that day, with open minds, right? We all, and we really thought about, well, what, what do you, what do we want in, in our city? What do we want for our students who are part of the city, and our families are part of the city? Um, and we kind of really brainstormed and just kind of, uh, thought, just came up with some visioning ideas that we had. And that was nice, because there was no preconce, no one, it didn't feel like anyone came in with, we want this, we want that. It was more, what do we all want? Um, and so that, from the facilitator perspective, felt good to know that people were open for that. And this is just the first step. Um, Trustee Kobo Smith has a lot of experience around data collection, and so there was the idea of we do focus groups or something where we're talking to folks outside of that committee, uh, to bring even more data. So of course, we'll have hard data from testing and from suspensions and from all the, the data that we have as a district, and then the city will bring in specific data around Parks and Rec usage and whatever the data is that they're going to bring. But we also want to talk to people and get qualitative data, and so that's also one of our steps. So this is the beginning of, um, we are hoping for a strong relationship and, um, kind of connection between city and school, and coming up with a plan.
Can I say something here?
Oh, sorry.
Uh, maybe after.
Yes. So the next part I wanted to say is, the mayor requested a meeting between the school board and the city council, so that we can all kind of talk, um, and, and come up with some, uh, maybe ideas with what all of us have. Um, and so what I'm not sure about, and I think this is a board discussion, is when that should happen, because we've only met twice, uh, once, and then we have another meeting. So it feels like that might be some time away, but, um, but that's just kind of something, I didn't know if we needed to add to our next agenda item or not for the March meeting. to our next agenda item or not for the March meeting.
Vice President Rocha?
I just wanted to say that I know that our hope in the past, the past was that originally, we even got started with, was that we needed help with the crossing guards, sharing the cost, that was number one. Number two is there's always been this issue that two entities should be sharing their facilities so that we can take care of our youth. So those are the two that I don't want to get lost.
Trustee Kobo Smith?
Thank you for sharing that, Trustee Rocha. I think that was pretty much our consensus as well, is how do we share resources to serve our students who are all part of our community? And I just, I just want to echo what, I don't really have anything additional to add, she was pretty thorough. But I'm really hopeful for what we can accomplish together.
And then Trustee Brown?
I had the privilege of going to Turner Elementary School on Love Day and just to see the kiddos with all of their hearts and their excitement, hearing their footsteps. I had a chance to take a tour of two different classrooms. One was first through third, and the other one was their preschool part of it. So we walked over and seeing the different dynamics of the students, the way that the teachers are getting, capturing their attention of learning. Even though the class was mixed with different grades, the teacher was able to, her name is Miss Melissa, very phenomenal lady. She was able to capture each of those students where they were at, and I thought that was amazing to be able to do that. And the patience that she had, because, you know, they had chips, they had candy, you know, all this stuff. And so she was able to still keep the kids focused. There was some plannings that she was doing, that she was trying to do. And one thing she did say to me that kind of I was a little concerned about is that they don't have math curriculum. They just recently got reading curriculum, but they don't have math. And we know that we use math every day. We use math in our dreams if we're counting money or something. So I do believe that, I just wanted to figure out, which we will talk on Friday in regards to making sure that they have the curriculum that they need so they can excel.
Yes, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that you all received this, and that is, in March, of course, we always have the Caesar Chavez information and at least announcement of things that we're doing. The Song for Caesar is for everyone that wants to come to the auditorium, be the auditorium on March 20th. I'm saying it now, it's a ways, by the time we come back to the March 19th meeting, this will be the next day. So I just wanted, in case anybody wants to put it in their agenda to have, to come and visit. It's wonderful because it has music of the past, which are now older people, young people then, and they were contributing and helping Caesar continue in his path, that's all.
And then I'll just be very quick and I'll share the book I have for today, it's called Waiting by Kevin Henkees. And I think it's really, I chose it very purposely for this moment because I think as we're going through this process of searching for a permanent superintendent, of new changes in the school district, I think it can often feel like we're waiting for something to happen. But I think this message has, this book has a really great message that says that within waiting, there is also a lot of hope. There's a lot of possibility when you're waiting, you are seeing what's going to happen next, what to expect. And I think I'd like, you know, encourage us to focus in on things like that as we're, you know, waiting for things to happen instead of lamenting in that we have not reached that destination. Maybe think about what are the possibilities that we could be headed towards. So it's a really nice, sweet book. So with that, we can move on to future meetings. Our next meeting will be on March 19th, and the one after that will be on April 16th. And then lastly, we have adjournments, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Great, it's been properly moved, is there a second?
A second.
So it's been properly moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed say no, and the motion passes.